Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilmember Pete Festerson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I thought I'd just take this time to recognize the family of Jean Bell that's with us here today, express our condolences, and use this time before Councilman Gray presents a more formal declaration that I remember her very fondly as well, and we think about you often, and we hope we have a good meeting in her honor today. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
City Clerk, certified publication on Daily Record, the official newspaper on April 1st, that was very pre-council, a regular city council meeting, April 5, 2016. Current copy of Openings Act, posting white binder on the East Wall legislative chambers.
Thank you. This Omaha City Council meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will not hear, the council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud nor convey disapproval. These actions detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or, turn off or mute any electronic devices. Before we begin the formal part of the meeting today, we have a couple of proclamations to read up. One of them is going to be read by Councilmember Gary Grenat. Mr. Grenat.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my honor today to read the proclamation in regards to the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And I appreciate the Council President asking me to do this. I remember just finishing my rookie year as a police officer in 1970. I got the distinct privilege of being assigned to guard the new 911 Center, which was moved into the sixth floor of the Omaha Police Department, 15th and Howard. Why they needed guarding, I don't know, but that's what I was assigned to do, and I did what I was told to do. And it was a great experience. Taught me how that new 911 system technology worked back in the 70s. Met some great people, listened to some calls that come in from frantic people, people misdialing, the whole nine yards. Those folks that work at 911 are just awesome. What they have today and the advancements in technology, and it's a great pleasure to recognize those folks. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require law enforcement, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt, the prompt response of law enforcement, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of law enforcement, firefighters, and medical services personnel is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephoned the Douglas County Emergency Communications Center in Omaha, Nebraska. Whereas professional public safety telecommunications are a vital link between citizens and victims, and are the first and critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the vital link for our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel, by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunications of Douglas County Emergency Communications Center in Omaha, Nebraska, have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each operator, dispatcher, and supervisor has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council, the City of Omaha, proclaims the week of April 10th through the 16th, 2016, to be the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Omaha, Nebraska, in honor of the dedicated men and women of the Emergency Communications Center. In witness, whereof we have set our hands and cause the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on the fifth day of April, 2016. I would like the Director of the Douglas County Emergency Communications Center, Jenny Hanson, to come and meet me at the podium.
Jenny, congratulations.
Thank you, members of the council. I'm Jenny Hanson, 911 Director, just starting 57 days ago, and I haven't had a chance to meet many of you, but I appreciate the proclamation, the recognition of the men and women here. Closer to the headset, I have Ryan Yarborough, my operations manager. Just for a brief few words, extending the invitation for you to come to the 911 Center, extend your thanks, and also members of the public to come and say thank you, and write notes of thanks, and even some public stories if they have them. But Ryan, just a few words.
Mine are much more scripted, but I do have a few words. I just wanted to take a few minutes to discuss what the meaning of National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week is, and--
Name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ryan Yarborough. Address is 134-18 Shirley Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68144. And I am the operations manager for 911. My apologies.
No, go ahead.
Just to give a brief explanation of, those that do service telecommunications, you probably won't recognize these people on the street. They don't wear badges, they don't carry guns, they don't drive police cars, or fire trucks, or ambulances. They do work around the clock, on holidays and birthdays, and they often miss family functions, school activities, and are at work when most people are home asleep. They are the lifeline between someone who needs help and those who respond to provide that help. 911 operators and dispatchers are the unseen and unsung heroes of emergency services. They're heroes with headsets. As you explained, the second full week in April is National Telecommunicators Week. And to give a kind of a brief history of that, in the early 80s, Contra Costa County Sheriff's Office in California conceived that notion to raise public awareness of the hard work and dedication of those telecommunications. And then in the early 90s, it received a formal proclamation by Congress renaming the week National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. So, we do invite anybody that has any questions, or ideas, or needs ideas for showing appreciation towards the telecommunications to give a call to our office manager, Kathy Allen. And that telephone number is 444-5800. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you. We next, before, again, before we begin our formal present, formal council meeting, we do have another proclamation that we wanted to read, and this one is regards to the late Jean Floyd Bell. Jean worked in the Human Rights and Relations Department for more, about as many years as I was in television, I think. We were around for quite a period of time, and Jean and I knew each other quite well. We were good friends, and though we were good friends, it didn't stop her from calling sometimes to ask why I made a certain vote, or why did I do that, or, Ben, why don't you stop that, or something like that. Jean was a, but, but her dedication to the work in the Human Rights and Relations Department, but more importantly, her work in the community for social change is, is something that, as I mentioned at the church this past, this past Sunday, that work needs to continue. We stand on the shoulders of people like Jean Bell, and we would do a disservice to people like her if we didn't continue to push and make social justice what it ought to be in this country. So with that, let me read up our proclamation, and then I have one of the family members come up, I will present it, and then if you want to make a couple of comments, you certainly can. It begins, whereas Ms. Jean Floyd Bell was born in Quitman, Louisiana, and attended Grambling State University in Grambling, Louisiana. In 1960, during the great migration of blacks out of the rural South states, she moved to Omaha in search of a better, in search of better job opportunities and progressive environments for people of color. This transition inspired her life's work, and whereas in September 1974, Jean became an employee of the City of Omaha, working first in the mayor's office until 1981, and then in the Human Rights and Relations Department until 2005. Jean retired in 2005 after 31 years of service to the City of Omaha. And whereas during Jean's 24 years in the Human Rights and Relations Department, she was committed to investigating complaints of discrimination in employment, housing, and public accordance, and enforcing diversity compliance and certification of small and emerging businesses. She was a devoted advocate for social justice, change, and equal treatment. And whereas during Jean's tenure as a city employee, she extended, she extended her devotion to social change outside of the workplace by coordinating events and participating on various committees and several boards. Jean coordinated the City of Omaha's annual Living the Dream Celebration in honor of Martin Luther King Jr., chaired the annual Black History Month Soul Food Luncheon, and the annual Native American Powwow. And whereas Jean was a civil rights champion, whose support has now, has made the City of Omaha a place that embraces diversity and ensures equal justice. She is a shining example of being committed to the cause and devoted to her community. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Omaha, recognizes and commends Jean Floyd Bell for her commitment and devotion to social change and justice on behalf of the City of Omaha. In witness, wherefore we have set our hand to cause the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed this fifth day of April, 2016. Someone could meet me at the podium.
Congratulations. I want to make a few, make a few comments, and say what you can, because this now belongs to you and the family.
Thank you very much. Hello. I'm Monica Bell. I'm Jean Bell's daughter, and I want to thank you guys for acknowledging her with this proclamation. The Speaker and the family had to go back to work, which is my daughter, so I call her Junior Jean. So, I just want to let you know, we really appreciate it, and thank you guys.
Thank you. And thank you for the years of service your mother gave us.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk.
Planning Board-- Item number five, ordinance--
Orders to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for Gallup University Riverfront Campus to allow for temporary signage that exceeds the 32 square feet maximum located at 601 Riverfront Drive between the City of Omaha and the National Park Service, providing site development standards. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, agenda item number five is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Motion. Moved and seconded to approve, no further lights, roll call.
Grenat, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Five is passed, seven to zero. Item six or eight or one case. Six is ordinance to rezone property located southwest of 52nd Center Street from General Industrial to Community Commercial District. Seven is to rezone to General Industrial District. Eight is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district to incorporate into that district these properties. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items six through eight are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve, no further lights, roll call.
Grenat, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Six or eight are passed, seven to zero. Resolutions, Ray Plummer, Platts and Platts. Item number nine, resolution replat transmitter here with entitled South Omaha Replat 23, generally located west of Dom and Avenue, south of A Street, is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number nine is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Motion. Moved and seconded to approve, no further lights, roll call.
Jerem, Milton, or, Grenat, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Six or eight are adopted, six to zero, or seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council rules, seven E. Agenda items 12 through 13 should be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Liquor, item number 14, Don Carmelo's Pizzeria, 1024 South 204th Avenue, Class I liquor license, no application, no location. This is an annexation.
Annexation. Public hearing on agenda item number 14 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Motion. Moved and seconded to approve, no further lights, roll call.
Grenat, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Ten, eleven are adopted, six to zero, or seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council rules, seven E. Agenda items 12 through 13 should be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Liquor, item number 14, Don Carmelo's Pizzeria, 1024 South 204th Avenue, Class I liquor license, no application, no location. This is an annexation.
Annexation. Public hearing on agenda item number 14 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving to approve. Moved and seconded to approve, no further lights, roll call.
Grenat, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Fourteen is adopted, seven to zero. Item number fifteen, Crystal Jade, 7255 Cedar Street, Class I liquor license, no application, no location.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifteen is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving to approve. It's been moved and seconded to approve, no further lights, roll call.
Grenat, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Fifteen is adopted, seven to zero. Item sixteen and seventeen are one applicant for two licenses. Sixteen is a Blackstone Meatball, 3910 Harney Street, Class I liquor license, no application, no location. Seventeen is a off-sale beer license for the same applicant, the same location.
Public hearing on agenda items sixteen and seventeen are today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific, appearing here. Mr. Matt Dwyer is also here with us, one of the owners. This is an upscale restaurant operation proposed at 39, the address is 3910 Farnham, I mean Harney, but it's actually will have its entrance on the Farnham Street side. We were also approached by the Montessori, the attorney for the Montessori School behind us, and they were concerned about a beer garden there. We have no plans to put a beer garden there now. If we would in the future, of course, we'd have to come back to them, and we've made that promise here on the record, that we would come back to them. And as you know, any addition to the property license would have to go through this council and get your approval as well as the commission. That's why we want to say that. Also want to say for the record, that we are, we are asking for packaged beer, that's because of the selection of type beers they'll have. Again, they're not going to be a craft brewery by any means, but they will have some unusual product, and for customer requests, they would like to have that as well. So with, that's the basics. If you have any questions, Madison is also here, or I try to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moving to approve. Moving to seconded to approve, no further lights, roll call.
Jerem, or, Grenat. Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Jerem passed a second time for a potential conflict of interest, 16 and 17, or adopted 601, passing. Item number 18, Railcar Modern American Kitchen, 1814 North 144th Street, Class I liquor license, no application, no location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 18 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve, no further lights, roll call.
Grenat, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Eighteen is adopted, seven to zero. Nineteen is Midtown Gas and Grocery, 1222 North 24th, or South 24th Street, packaged liquor license, no application, no location.
Public hearing on agenda item number nineteen is today. Proponents, please.
Stephanie Hazelton, Suite 650, 4600 Madison, Kansas City, Missouri.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, welcome back.
Thank you, good to see you too.
You were the attorney for previous applicant for the same location, correct?
Yes, I represented Chadrew before he died. His wife took over. This is the manager, who's been there the whole time. So he's been there all these years. It's not like a new, new person.
Sure. And one of the things that happened when Chadrew, who by the way was a wonderful person--
Very good man.
--and an excellent responsible operator, and during his ownership of the enterprise and his wife's then continued ownership with, and this manager, there haven't been any complaints. And so, I'd like to think that the fact that there haven't been any complaints is also due in part to the fact that we had these voluntary restrictions on the license with regard of the no singles, and wondered why that wasn't included within the application. So, want to give you a chance to explain.
Right. Because there are stores within two blocks that don't have the same restriction, our client has had no problems. We don't think it's because they haven't sold singles, and we think that it puts them at a disadvantage to have competitors who can offer products that our client can't offer so, so close to them. It seems like either there should be restrictions, oh, I'm sorry, to everyone in the area, you know, in our market area, or at least within four blocks. Why should my client be the only one who has the restrictions? We would like to try it without the restrictions, and if not at this time, certainly by next year.
Well, just a little bit about my perspective on it, in that, that neighborhood in the Columbus Park area is, been the subject of a past community development block grant, targeted funding to try to increase the housing stock quality. We're now working in Deer Park, I think, this year with the same kind of grant program. But what that program does, is it takes really blighted areas and tries to infuse some new energy through improving the structures that are there in the neighborhood. And what existed before Chadrew's ownership was the store, and I think it's at Pierce or Poppleton, I forget which this location is on South 24th, but it had kind of become a place where people loitered, and the convenience store became the refrigerator for lower income people to buy single cans of beer and 50 ML, sometimes called airplane shot bottles, because of the size of the bottle you get on a plane. But since the restrictions came in, this location, there's not been one complaint, there's not been one loitering ticket. The trash is, is picked up, I think, daily. And there's another store at 24th and Leavenworth to the north, that when they came in, agreed to the same restrictions. Conceding that across the street, on the same intersection, is an All Nations package, which is one of your competitors, but they had had the license before the restrictions came about. So I would, I would draw and distinguish that one from yours. And what I'm afraid of is that, now that we've made such progress in this neighborhood, the city, through federal CDVG grant dollars, has invested so heavily, and it's trying to come back, and there's actually been an affordable housing development on the old site of St. Anne's Parish on the north end of Columbus Park, invested millions of dollars in that, that we risk that momentum, and we would then open the door, I'm afraid, for 24th and coming to come back in, or Leavenworth, excuse me, to say, well, we want, they, they got it, so now we want it. So I can't support it without the continued restriction. And I would hope, and I think I heard you say you would, when you want to live to kind of fight another day on, or revisit that.
No, we would of course accept the restrictions. We'd like our competitors to also have the same restrictions, and if there's a way to do that, I mean, consistent with your vision for the area, which we embrace, we'd like to see that happen.
Okay. So, and I would just represent to you that while I'm around, at least in this chair, that that would be my continued position, and in fact, we've done it at 24th and Leavenworth. So, I will take that as a, an agreement to amend, to include the restriction.
Yes, well, we will amend, include the restriction.
Move to amend to include the continued restriction.
Moving and seconded to continue the restriction, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Past as amended with restrictions.
Thank you.
Oh, same with the-- These are the same restrictions as the former applicant had, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Item 20 is Buc-Ee's, number 21, at 20402 Veterans Drive, packaged liquor license, no application, no location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 20 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Robert Deising, 1005 East Aberdeen Drive, Papillion, Nebraska, 68046.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Motion. Moving and seconded to approve. Mr. Jerem.
I just wanted to make sure we're, we're still going to have you at 36th and Farnham there at the Crescent Mood.
Oh yeah, absolutely. Nothing's changed there, and we will continue our operations in Benson as well, as we're just in need of expansion.
Southwest entrance.
I'm sorry?
This will be the southwest entrance.
Yeah, more for, for production, so that we can package our beer.
Moving and seconded to approve, no lights, roll call.
Grenat.
We're still in Omaha, that's the good thing, right? I know we're not in Sarpa County.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-one and twenty-two are adopted, seven to zero. Item number 23 is Buffalo Wild Wings, request permission to appoint a manager. There's a request to withdraw that application.
Moving and seconded to withdraw, no lights, roll call.
Jerem, Grenat, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-three is withdrawn, seven to zero. Twenty-four is-- 21 and 22 are one applicant for two licenses. Twenty-one is Infusion Brewing Company, 6271 South 118th Street, a Class L brew pub, new application, new location. And 22 is a catering license for same applicant, same location.
Public hearing on agenda items 21 and 22 are today. Proponents, please.
William Beburek, 7905 South 45th Avenue, Bellevue, Nebraska, 68157, owner of Infusion Brewing Company.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Motion. Moving and seconded to approve. Mr. Jerem.
I just wanted to make sure we're, we're still going to have you at 36th and Farnham there at the Crescent Mood.
Oh yeah, absolutely. Nothing's changed there, and we will continue our operations in Benson as well, as we're just in need of expansion.
Southwest entrance.
I'm sorry?
This will be the southwest entrance.
Yeah, more for, for production, so that we can package our beer.
Moving and seconded to approve, no lights, roll call.
Grenat.
We're still in Omaha, that's the good thing, right? I know we're not in Sarpa County.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-one and twenty-two are adopted, seven to zero. Item number 23 is Buffalo Wild Wings, request permission to appoint a manager. There's a request to withdraw that application.
Moving and seconded to withdraw, no lights, roll call.
Jerem, Grenat, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-three is withdrawn, seven to zero. Twenty-four is-- Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
23 is withdrawn, seven to zero. 24 is Fountain West, 4714 North 120th Street. Request permission to appoint Bethany Barretta, manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number 24 is today. Proponents, please.
Bethany Barretta, 808 Valentine Lane, Papillion, Nebraska, 68046. Representing Fountain's West.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Been moved and seconded to approve, no lights. Roll call.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
24 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed, consent agenda shall be taken up at city council meeting following the consent agenda in the order to which they are removed unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
Public hearing on agenda item number 25 was held on March 22nd, 2016. Is there a motion? Moved and seconded to approve, no lights. Roll call.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
25 is passed, seven to zero. We're removing item number 40 from the consent agenda.
Thank you. The public hearing on agenda items numbers 26 through 39, 41 through 49 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Kara Eastman, 4808 Davenport Street. I'm here in support of number 35.
I think it's 35, isn't it? Yes. And thank you, I'm in support of that as well. Our Healthy Kids Alliance does a fantastic amount of work in this community and we ought to have a day to honor them at some point, but they do some tremendous work.
If they could move across the street into a good district.
You don't want to move across the street into a quote "good" district, do you? Is there a motion? For move to approve, it's been moved and seconded to approve, no lights. Roll call.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
26 through 39, 41 through 49, are all adopted, seven to zero. Now, item number 40, resolution that detached agreement between the city and to get together for the purpose of providing homeless prevention services is hereby approved and we have an amendment.
Public hearing on agenda item 40 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Been moved and seconded to move the amendment, no lights. Roll call.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
40 is adopted as amended, seven to zero. Resolution is item number 50, resolution attached, Exarban Point Tax Interfinancing Redevelopment Project Plan for the Site located at 6920, 40, 40 and 1/2 Pacific Street, including the demolition of the restaurant structure and proposed construction of a one-story commercial structure consistent with approximately 12,000 square feet. Recommend the city participate in the allocation. The TIF is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number 50 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Before you is the project for, TIF project for the Exarban Point project, which is outlined in blue, 72nd Pacific Street, to just get bearings. This is a pretty difficult site to, a challenging site to redevelop. And some may remember it's the former site of the Venice Inn that closed over a year ago, probably a little more closer to a year and a half ago. And the site was demolished and a small site needed to be redeveloped to help finish out the commercial area. The applicant is proposing to take this underutilized vacant site and place a 12,000 square foot commercial building there with three tenants. The applicant will, has a real estate office that will be one of the tenants. They've talked about Legend's Patio and Grill, which will be another tenant, and they have an LOI on a third tenant. So they're pretty much ready to go. This project involved sewer relocation. Let me show you that. So this is the site, and I think I have it upside down. So this is the north, this is Pacific Street, and then 72nd would be here. The sewer, it was discovered at the beginning of the project that the sewer actually went through the site, which is where the building would have been placed. So this, the TIF will be used, or has been used, to relocate that sewer from this direction to go that direction. So the TIF is helping to cover that, a lot of other site work and site prep that went into this project and engineering fees and other public improvements that will be involved with this site. It involves 272,000, a little over that, in TIF, and a little over 3.1 million as a total project cost for this particular site. I do have a rendering. This is a general rendering of what is proposed for that site, elevations and renderings. And I know the representative of the developer and the developer himself is here. If you have any specific questions, other than that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Mark Johnson, 11440 West Center Road, appearing today on behalf of the developer, 6920 Ventures LLC. I don't have anything substantive to add to Ms. Hadley's presentation, but I just wanted to say on behalf of the developer that we appreciate the city staff's willingness to work with us. As Bridget mentioned, this site has been difficult to redevelop so far. Complications have arisen with respect to the floodplain elevation changing after acquisition between, excuse me, between the planning board's approval of the TIF plan a year ago and today. So we've been working with the Public Works Department and the PINE Department on that in connection with the floodplain permit and as well as figuring out that the proper distance to shift the access point into the site to the east to help safety issues with traffic coming in and out of there. So we just want to say thank you to the city staff for all of your time and attention to this matter over the course of the last 12 weeks, or I'm sorry, 12 months. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jarom.
Yeah, and I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Johnson, and your clients for their willingness to work with the Elmwood Park Neighborhood Association too. They had a number of questions as the project got announced and you've been there meeting with them and I appreciate that and they appreciate you doing that, so.
Thank you.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Been moved and seconded to approve, no lights. Roll call.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
50 is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 51, resolution, city is hereby declare its intent to authorize the issuance and sale of redevelopment bonds for the demolition of civic auditorium remediation hazardous materials and grade the land at the site, which is located at 1804 Capitol Avenue.
Public hearing on agenda item number 51 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Just here for a technical kind of record preserving objection to it in terms of the amount of the bond. And we just want to, on behalf of Anderson, exhibiting one of the bidders on this project, we just want to call to the council's attention our concern as not only a bidder that did not receive the award, but also as a concerned citizen, that it appears that these bonds are based in part upon the estimated construction costs and the construction contract entered into with De novo. We have a situation here where De novo has defaulted and it's been awarded to the bonding company. We are aware that the bonding company has solicited and obtained bids that are actually below by, in excess, well in excess of $100,000 of what De novo had bid. So you have a situation here where it appears that even though this should be a public bidding process, that we have a situation where the bonding company may very well profit off of the default of a contractor whose concerns were called out to the council's attention. So we just are here to object for the technical reasons that we suggest that more scrutiny is appropriate by the council as to exactly what's being expended upon the contractor that the city's now substituted and we think that those numbers are questionable. The issue is about who's going to get the contract, whether or not the contract award is valid, I think will be in separate proceedings or are already subject to separate proceedings, but want to call the council's attention to this issue over what's being expended and concerns that we have a situation where a party that's in effect in default is profiting and being rewarded by that. And we don't think that's appropriate. We think that's an inappropriate expenditure of taxpayer funds.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. We talked about this a little bit this morning. I don't know if Ms. Peters is available or maybe Mr. Bench if she's not. Mr. Bench, looks like you're up. Or Mr. Kratz even, whoever's most appropriate to answer this item at this stage. And actually, the first question might be for Mr. Curtis because what this item is, is it authorizes redevelopment bonds to pay for the demolition of the civic auditorium, which we've known for a period of time would be necessary as part of that redevelopment. But it doesn't, it authorizes the sale, but the finance would obviously not issue those bonds or more bonds than it would need to proceed with this project, right?
Steve Curtis, City Finance, that's correct. Will only pay for those things that are approved and authorized.
So if in fact it costs less, and we think it will, which is my next question for Mr. Kratz or Mr. Bench, you would only issue that amount and nothing more? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I thought that was for Mr. Kratz. What was the question?
If it costs less than the 3.4 million and we think it will, you would only issue the amount you need, not the 3.4 million?
Yeah, and actually, the way that this works is that the bond, the actual, we accumulate the expenditures as they go. We'll actually offer the bonds a little bit later down the road, so we would know approximately how much we need at the time they're offered.
Right. Okay, thank you. And now, Mr. Kratz or Mr. Bench, could you just kind of update all of us and for the folks that have been watching the status of the project and what happens at this juncture? Since we had a contractor that did default and it has now gone to their bonding company to be responsible for continuing the work?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. As you know, the De novo defaulted several weeks ago. During that period of time, the city's been in contact with the surety company. The surety company has, as is their duty and requirement, selected somebody else to finish the work. Just today, those contracts with the surety company were signed by the city. With that, the new company, which is Spiritus, can then begin, rebegin the demolition and we hope that'll start within the next week or two.
And that's just the asbestos removal, or is it the entire demolition that will happen after that?
This covers the entire demolition. Spiritus is a general contractor, then you have a subcontractor that's on the site now doing the asbestos removal.
And we have reason to believe it will cost less than 3.4 million, right?
First I want to mention, just to add a little bit to Mr. Curtis's comments, the 3.4 million also includes the cost of issuing the bonds, attorney's fees, underwriters' fees and things like that. So that amount is always greater than what the actual cost is going to be. In this case, as Mr. Becker suggested, if the cost is going to be less than what we anticipated, that's all we will pay and expect to pay.
Okay. So despite some concerns about, you know, the contractor themselves and the wish that this would have started sooner, people should start seeing and notice changes on that site in the next few weeks?
That's correct. And realize it's going to be a long process to do the demolition. It'll take a good year or so to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garnett.
Sorry, I was having a "I told you so" moment. This morning at pre-council, Ms. Peters, I see you here. Would you mind?
Michelle Peters, Deputy City Attorney.
Thank you for rushing down. City Attorney, just mentioned prior to your arrival that De novo defaulted and then it goes to the bonding company to make a decision of who the next contractor will be, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And they picked a St. Louis firm, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And my question is, it goes to the bonding company, the city administration has nothing to say in that process. Is that correct? It's totally up to the bonding company to make that decision?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Jarom.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I don't know, just because I read it in the paper, if it's true or not, but it falls under that category where I generally believed it to be so when I read it. So I thought this was in federal court or something and there was some injunction, temporary injunction. What is the status of that as it pertains to what we're doing here?
Michelle Peters, Deputy City Attorney. So what is pending in federal court is that one of the purported subcontractors of Anderson has filed a federal lawsuit and filed a motion for a preliminary injunction. That motion was heard last week and, excuse me, two weeks ago. Briefs were due last week and we are waiting for an opinion from the judge on that temporary injunction.
So there's no order from a court that we're violating by taking action here today?
That's true.
Okay. In terms of what we do here today, though, I think I heard Mr. Kratz say it's his hope that, or expectation, I forget what he said, that this contractor who the surety company hired will begin in the next week or two. That's with the condition, or caveat, I guess, that there's no federal court order to the contrary?
Yes, on both accounts. So we hope, I think Mr. Bench's department is working on getting a pre-con meeting with Spiritus since we've not met personally with any of those folks. We'd like to get that in place before we hand over the keys. They have, they, Spiritus, has ratified the contract that De novo had with New Horizon They have, they, Spiritus, has ratified the contract that de novo had with New Horizon, and so they are ready, willing, and able to start up just as soon as they get the nod from Spiritus. So hopefully, you know, I, just depending on when this pre-con meeting gets going, I would say within the next couple of days, week at the most.
Now, just hypothetically speaking, if the St. Louis contractor defaults, what happens?
Once again, we have a performance bond for the full amount of the contract. As pointed out, this contract is a little bit lower, and I can tell you, you will recall that you approved the, the contract in the amount of $3,105,743 with de novo. The new contract amount is $3,013,175.22. So there is a slight cost savings. As Mr. Kratz pointed out, that is not going to become a windfall to the insurance company because this case, although it's not unusual that we have to call the bonds, it is unusual that it's done this early in the process. So because it was so early in the process, there had been no invoices paid out at all. So basically, this is a situation where the bonding company is now, you know, turning this over, and there's going to, there'll be an agreement between us and Spiritus so that the payments can be made directly through them based on this new price and the invoices and, and those kinds of things that are turned in to us.
Now, did I also read that there had been some work performed by the asbestos abatement company?
There had been, and they are looking to-
Will they be made whole?
They will be made whole, of course. They are, they will be submitting those new invoices under Spiritus so that they will be paid in full through the contract.
So is there right now in the building anything going on other than a security person?
There is, we were told by the insurance and bonding company and New Horizons that because of the hazardous materials there, that they wanted a, some monitors there. So there have been monitors on site since, I believe it's been about 10 days now, and those, again, the agreement has been that those, those payments will act as a deduct from the contract, the new contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Any more questions, or is there a motion? Moving seconded to approve. No further lights. Roll call.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
D1 is adopted, seven to zero. Presumed City Council Rule 7 of Agenda Items 52 through 53 should be laid over three weeks for publication in public hearing. Ordinance on final reading, item 54, ordinance establishing the Old Town Elkhorn Business Improvement District, number 6878, under authority of the Business Improvement Act. We have A document submitted, and B is an amendment, and we're requesting after we adopt the amendment that we have a motion to lay over three weeks and continue the public hearing, and republish and re-notify.
Do we have to have a public hearing?
Yeah, we should have a public hearing too, even though we're going to continue.
Before we do the, we can wait and do that, but are there any proponents who wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is continued for three weeks?
Yep.
Continued for three weeks. Moving seconded to move the amendment. Roll call.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Now we need a motion to lay over three weeks and continue the public hearing and republish and notify.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
54 is laid over three weeks. Item 55, special ordinance laying a special tax for removal of litter, group number 2016-07. We have an amendment.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 55 is today. Proponents, please.
We've already had a public hearing.
Oh, we already had a public hearing. I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. Move the amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Moving seconded to move the amendment. No lights. Roll call.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
55 is passed as amended, seven to zero. Item 56, special ordinance laying a special tax for weeds, group number 2016-08. We have an amendment.
Roll call.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
56 is passed as amended, seven to zero. Appeal for a bid rejection, item number 57, Spencer Management appeals the rejection of their bid of February 24th, 2016, for the 2016 Emergency Concrete Panel Repair, various locations within the City of Omaha Project.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 57 is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Justin Moore. My address is 2821 Caldwell, Omaha, Nebraska, 68131. We're coming in front of the City Council to present our case and to seek answers on why Spencer Management was disqualified for non-compliance on emergency concrete panel repair, OPW 5211. To give a little background on the situation, we submitted a bid on February 24th for emergency concrete panel repair. We received a pre-qualification letter on the 25th. We submitted our information for our pre-qualification letter on March 6th. We were scheduled to meet with Mr. Kleffner on the 9th of March, and was requested additional information. We received a rejection letter on the 17th of March in which it was dated on the 10th, and we wanted a little bit of clarification on that because if we were requested for information on the 9th, would we really given a fair opportunity to present that additional information if we had a rejection letter dated on the 10th? One of the things that we were rejected for was e-verification. Well, once we met with Mr. Kleffner, we assessed the project and the needs of the project, and we decided to change our key personnel, which was submitted. The second thing we were rejected for was our SEB contractors, and on the original letter for pre-qualification, it asked for subcontractors, not SEB contractors. So Spencer Management decided to give a full disclosure of all our subcontractors, including our SEB subcontractors. And the last thing we were rejected for was manpower and capacity, and we also wanted clarification on that deal. We are in the process of completing a project with the City of Omaha valued at nine, almost $900,000. We did a total revenue last year of $3 million. So based on us not being qualified from a manpower and capacity standpoint, we just wanted a little bit of clarification on that. And for those reasons, we are seeking answers to better understand our justification on non-compliance, and thank the council for allowing me to present my case.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Ted Becker, 11225 Davenport Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here on behalf of N&amp;L Concrete Inc., and kind of a quasi-proponent, quasi-opponent to this item. NLL was the second low bidder on this project, and they also received a rejection letter. So insofar as there is an appeal, and looking at the verbiage of the agenda that you can grant the appeal and make direction to the department, we support it in that regard, that we think it needs to go back to the department and have the appropriate process applied to it. In short, Spencer Management was the low bidder, N&amp;L Concrete was the second low bidder. I think that there is some potential issue about N&amp;L Concrete's bid, but the bottom line, the way the department approached this, they asked for information from both contractors outside of what was in the underlying bid documents when you opened up the bidding process. If you submit, if you're pre-qualified and you submit a responsive bid, and you're the low bidder, you should not be subject to additional burdens. And there are any number of cases that say that infringes upon the public bidding process, and that gets cities and public entities into trouble. In this case, both the companies faced issues such as requests about e-verify. I respectfully submit that raising those type of questions by members of a department within the city are potentially discriminatory in and of themselves. If you have a bunch of contractors or employees that are named Smith, and Jones, and Tate, or whatever, you're not going to get those questions. But if you have questions about, got a question about Felipe Rodriguez, or an Hispanic sounding name, and that's what the issue is here, we want to dig further into this, well, that's discriminatory in and of itself. And I respectfully submit that that determining e-verify compliance is something outside of the expertise of people in public works. There are federal agencies that occupy that field, that are charged with enforcement of those issues, and it's their responsibility to enforce those issues. If you have an e-verify system in place as an employer, that creates a safe harbor for you as protection, but we shouldn't be using systems like e-verify as a way to kind of effectively disqualify certain contractors. Other questions that were raised to both of the companies, such as, well, do you have the right number of contractors? Do you have the right size crew? Again, those aren't inside the specifications upon which this contract was let. And it happens all the time that a contractor can get awarded a contract, they can sub it out to additional people, they can hire additional crews. Those sort of questions about how many crews you have, what are your finances, any extraneous issues, are the sorts of items that are outside the public bidding process that have no business being included. And in effect, what happened is that the two low bidders were skipped over to the third high bidder at the cost to taxpayers of literally hundreds of thousands of dollars of difference. And although the contractor that will be, I suspect will be awarded, I don't think it's on your agenda today, but the contractor that is awarded this, they are a tier-two contractor, I respectfully submit in name only, they're awarded millions upon millions of dollars the last several years of contracts, and it, it seems to me that we have contractors here that are the small and emerging business types, that are precisely the type of companies that your ordinances are intended to facilitate and work with. And then you have set up a situation where there are these additional qualifications, additional hurdles set up for them to fail upon, and that are latched upon that are outside the public bidding requirements. So I would respectfully submit that it would be appropriate to send this back to the department to, to approve the appeal and send it back to the department so that appropriate determination is made as to the lowest responsible bidder based upon the project specifications, not extraneous information that's outside those project specifications, and especially items that I think are wholly beyond the appropriate purview of someone in the department. And if I could just, I, I do wish to raise one other notion because frankly, I don't know how else to call it to the council's attention. My client also appealed the decision in a rejection letter. There was the same issue. They received a letter dated March 10th. They did not receive it until March 22nd. Within 10 days of the receipt of that letter, they did file an appeal and gave notice to the city that they also, like Spencer Management, wished to have their appeal doctored before the council. And they were told that because it was not within 10 days of the alleged date of mailing, even though we don't know that, and even though it's very strange, the letter dated March 10th, same form letter sent to both NLL and Spence, took seven days to get to Spence according to their testimony, and according to the certified mail receipt, 12 days to get to us. And so I, I would ask leave to make those part of the record, specifically the certified mail receipt obtained from Buster Brown, the notification from the city, and the appeal by NLL.
Thank you. Does that complete your testimony?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Greg Armstrong, Swain Construction, 6002 North 89th Circle. I want to address the March 10th letter. Swain received it on the 12th, two days after it was sent out of City Hall. We might get a little different mail system than those guys apparently, but we got them two days. So we had no issue with that. Now, it comes to our place, I don't know if they have a P.O. box, that they don't pick that up, couldn't tell you. But I want to address the e-verify. Swain has been e-verifying since you guys put it into place, and that is March of 2010. So Swain's disadvantaged when we e-verify? Our labor pool is limited. Those guys hire anybody that walks in. We probably have a 60 to 70% unsuccessful e-verification. They won't clear. So when they don't clear, we don't put them to work. So I think the council really should vote on this thing as far as you've done previously. You guys have really followed the letter of the law. Real simply, rules are rules, and I think we all should follow them. Swain's been in this position that Spencer and NLL has been in. We lost a million dollar job too, because we didn't fill out one simple little box, a simple little box. We wasn't down here protesting that at all. We learned by that. We triple-checked everything now before it comes here. That's been seven, eight years ago, and we haven't made a mistake since. So I, I just would encourage you guys to vote like you have previously. You guys have really followed the rules, and that's what I'd like to see you do today. And I'd be here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. I have a number of questions, and I have a number of concerns about this contract, but I want to start with my questions first. If I could, Mr., Mr. Moore, if I could have you come down first. Mr. Moore, tell me, you just finished, you, you're still working on a job that you bid it on, and, and you won the bid, and that bid would, originally was for what amount?
$512,000.
And it ended up being, at the end of the day, how much?
I think as of today, we might be around $850,000.
And the reason for the difference is what?
I guess it's based on evaluation. Depending on, I don't know the way the city does their evaluation, but I can assume they re-evaluated from past year's projects, and then they come up with an evaluation to keep the scope around the amount that it was supposed to bid at. That's, that's the only thing that I can come up with based on that, but other than that, I wouldn't know why I wouldn't bid as a $900,000 if we're doing an additional $400,000 in work.
But you did a, but, but you, it was a $400,000-
Yeah, five, well, five, we bid, we won the project last, last year, 2015, utility cuts for $512,000, and as of today, our contract value is about $850,000.
Okay. And the reason for the difference in the amount was, did you do extra work or did something else?
No. Well, we did. We did, we did, we did, we did a little bit of extra work, but majority of the work was based on the, the scope of work that we bid for utility adjustments.
Okay. What is your bonding capacity today?
$2 million.
What is your insurance policy?
I think maybe $5?
$5 million?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Mr., I think it's, is it Mr. Navarro, or who's the owner of the company now? Is it Eric? Would you come up, please? Eric, give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Eric Walquist. It's 18424 Pierce Circle.
Okay. What is your bonding capacity today?
$1 million up to $3 million.
And your insurance policy?
I think it's $5 million.
It's $5 million?
Yeah.
Let, let me ask you, and I want to bring Mr. Moore up again too, because I got one other question that I want to ask you. The questions that were asked in these documents that I have about e-verify and size of groups and numbers of crews and all of that sort of thing, was that, has that ever been asked of you in the past in all of the jobs that you've done for the City of Omaha? Have you ever been asked those questions?
No.
Were they ever a part of the bid document?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
No.
Were you ever asked any of those questions in any of the jobs that you've done? Have you ever been asked about e-verify? Have you ever been asked about size of, of crews, number of crews, those sorts of things? Have you ever been asked that in prior contracts?
No. We did have an issue last year where we needed to provide additional information that was in the bid documents. We did have that, but it had, it had nothing to do with e-verify, or had nothing to do with the size of the crews, or anything like that.
So none of these-
Could you give your name again?
Again, for the record.
Justin.
Thank you.
Okay. So you, so at no time, at, at no time in any of the other contracts were you ever asked about e-verify, or you were ever asked about size of crews?
No.
Numbers of people on the crew?
No.
Subcontractors?
Well, yeah. Last year, we were asked about our subcontractors. I don't, I don't think it was necessarily an issue, but Mr. Kleffner just wanted to be aware of our subcontractors.
Okay. And your, and the subcontractors, and part of the concern was that you had some subcontractors in this particular bid that, the way I'm understanding it, is that you didn't, you had a couple of subcontractors that weren't certified with the city? had a couple of subcontractors that weren't certified with the city?
Yeah, they weren't SEB contractors, but in our original letter, pre-qualification letter that we got, I think it was question two, it asked for our subcontractors. It didn't ask for our SEB subcontractors. So we just gave, we just gave a full disclosure of all the subcontractors that we use as a business out of the work outside of the city work that we do. We just submitted all our subcontractors.
So you submitted all the subcontractors that you've worked with?
Yeah, we submitted all, because that's what it asked for. That was the question number two, is it asked to submit all of your subcontractors. So once we submitted our subcontractors, we also submitted all of our SEB subcontractors also.
Okay, so you submitted all your subcontractors, you've never been asked these questions before, and both of you have a bonding capacity of near two million or more and insurance policy of at least five million?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cleftner, if you could come up, please?
Yes, sir.
I wanted to give you the opportunity to respond because they, the comment has been made here, first of all, that this was not part of the bid document, that these additional questions were not part of the bid document. And these questions, according to the two low bidders, have never been asked of them before and I wanted you to respond to that.
First of all, they are part of the contract. They're part of determining.
Your name, please?
Michael Cleftner, I'm the construction engineer with Public Works Division, excuse me.
Okay, and I want you to talk about what was in the bid document.
What was in the bid documents, all that's required in the bid documents is the performance bid bond or the bid bond and then they submit a bid. As the Public Works is allowed to under the contract is to determine whether they're a responsible bidder or not. There are a list of items within the contract I can request to determine whether they're a responsible bidder that's able to do the project.
Okay, so you're talking about able to do the project?
Yes.
So what was in the, what was in their answers that made you feel as though they weren't, they weren't able to perform the job?
Which, well, I'll say.
Let's start with Spencer Management. What was their, what was in, what was in their answers that gave you the, gave you a clue that they didn't have the ability to do the job?
Well, first of all, the reason why we rejected the bid was based off of the e-Verify and based off of the SEB list that was submitted. The original submittal listed, excuse me if I look this up, the original submittal by Spencer Management listed 14 individuals as the key personnel. When they resub, when they submitted their e-Verify documentation, and I don't verify the e-Verify documentation, all I get is the printout from their e-Verify report. They do all that on their own, they have to certify that all on their own. All I get on my end would be the documentation showing the individuals that have been verified for e-Verify when they were hired and so on and so forth. Their e-Verify documentation only included one of the individuals on their key personnel list and then listed 10 other individuals totally different than what was on the list. It also showed on their e-Verify that they did not have them hired or on the e-Verify system until the first of March 2016, which means that they had not e-verified any of their individuals under their employ when the contract was submitted, which is required by law.
Okay, and so you're saying that the e-Verify was the main reason why Spencer Management was, was not given the job?
Yes.
Okay. Have you asked them about e-Verify before on any of their other, because they're just finishing a job?
Yes, I did ask them about their e-Verify last year on that same project when they were, when they were having issues with subcontractors and such, that being a Nav1 that went out of business. They submitted some documentation. It was frustrating on my part, but because the project was in flow and I couldn't deal with the matters because I had several other problems, I talked to law about the situation. They said if it became a substantial problem, I could submit all the documentation and they could deal with it. I chose to let it go until this year and then I would address the matter further when I had time.
Okay, and about the subcontractors, they, he submitted all, for Spencer Management, they submitted all the contractors that they've ever worked with?
And I explained, I sat down with him after the first submittal that I requested the information and I stated to him that two of you, two of your, two of the subcontractors on your list are not SEBs, you need to only give me the list of the contractors, the subcontractors you're going to use. Instead of having four, he listed six on his next submittal and left the two that were still non-SEBs on the list.
Okay. Let me ask you a question about, now, there was a meeting that you had on March 9th. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, and on March 9th, what was required at that meeting?
On March 9th, what I requested at that meeting was a financial statement certified by CPA stating their resources and liabilities for this calendar year or the previous fiscal year, letter of credit from a concrete supplier stating what their monthly allowance would, letter of credit would be at a concrete supplier and whether that concrete supplier would open on a Saturday and a Sunday to do the work. And then also the e-Verify documents on all listed personnel that they had submitted.
And did you get all that information?
Yes, I got all the information from both, from all three. I requested the information not just from one bidder, I requested it from all three bidders.
Okay, and on March 9th, how much time did you give them to get back?
I gave them three days.
You gave them three days to get back?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then you had a meeting with Navarro on March 9th as well. How long did you give them to get back?
Three days.
Why is there a letter dated March 10th rejecting them?
When, and that was some confusion internally and that was why they were not mailed out till the 17th. The letters that were drafted on March 10th were because from confusion between myself and Ms. Tippi Pierce on what the, what the next step was. She drafted the letters per what was my direction and at this time, it didn't look like they were going to meet the requirements. She drafted.
How did you know that before they, before you got your information back?
By the discussion and by the both phone calls when we were talking with them, that they basically said they needed to certify, they needed to get somebody in their office to get certified on the e-Verify system, which meant that they hadn't e-Verified previously.
And they're saying that they've never had to do that before?
Well, that would be a mistake on their part, Councilman. Them not having to do that before would be them in violation of state law and also in violation of our city contracts.
But if they've not been asked, who's in violation?
Well.
Them or the city. Who's in violation if they've never been asked?
I would say probably both, you Councilman, but this being my first full year at the position, I took it on myself to ensure that we were getting responsible bidders on contracts that I believe are important in nature that they can affect our traveling public.
Okay. The reason why I asked the questions about bonding and insurance is because bonding companies go through the same process and insurance companies go through the same process. If they were able to get $2 million in bonding and $5 million in insurance, they would not have been able to get that if they weren't able to perform the job and that they weren't doing anything, and that they weren't doing anything illegal. So why would we now as a city assume that they can't do the work or assume that there's something else wrong when bonding companies and insurance companies insured them and bonded them at the numbers that they did?
Well, sir, if I can point out, bonding companies always don't do the best research and sometimes don't have the best instance, best interest of the city in mind.
All right, so, but how are we supposed to know that?
By doing diligence on our end if we have concerns or questions on what, on what's been submitted for a bid.
Okay, and you, and so you're saying that the e-verification, that they say they've never been asked for before, you're saying that that's the reason why they were rejected?
That's the primary reason why they were rejected, because of contract reasons, yes.
And SEBs?
Yes.
Was there ever any conversation with the Human Rights and Relations Department?
No, because I did not feel it was an SEB issue. If it was an SEB issue, I would have brought it to them.
Isn't that how you let the bid, though?
Yes, it's 100% SEB contract. And all three bidders are SEB contractors.
Okay, so, but you never made any contact with the Human Rights and Relations Department to determine some of these issues or go through some of these issues?
No, I brought the issues to the attention of the legal department. They stated that my arguments were of legal and sound, so I moved forward.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, if I could get you to come back up again, please? On your, first of all, I want to re, I want you to reiterate again, you said you'd never been asked about e-Verify before. Name and address again for the record.
Justin Moore, 2821 Caldwell, Ammon, Nebraska, 68131.
You've never been asked about e-Verify before?
No, no. The only thing that we were asked for, even through our subcontractors, is a page that's in the bid documents, basically that states that you are responsible to e-Verify your employees from a, from a business standpoint. So it basically is giving us the responsibility to take care of that. So if anything did happen, it's on us.
So the responsibility is yours, not the city's?
Right, right. That's what the bid documents, that's what we have to sign, we have to sign a page, I would have brought it with me, but we had to sign a page.
RC1.
Right, stating that you are responsible for this, you're doing this, you're doing that from a e-Verify standpoint. I've never been actually asked for the actual e-Verify, actually verifies.
Okay. Mr. Cleftner, if I could have you come up again then? If in the document, if in the document, the business is required to do this, why are we going back?
Well, in the new contracts, correct me if I'm wrong, Heather, but on the new contracts, that certification is no longer in there. That's, that was in the previous contract. We have the new EJ CDCs that actually states that they have to have it and we can request it.
Were those stated to any of the, any of the contractors?
Stated that.
Were they, were they aware of the change?
Well, if they bid on the project, I would hope they would have read the contract.
Okay, and they read the contract and they determined that they are the responsible party for, that the business is the responsible party for e-verification, not the city?
Yes.
Okay, so why are we doing it?
Well, we're not, we're not doing the e-Verify, Councilman. We're asking for the verification that they actually did it. There's an actual process that they have to go through to e-Verify their, their employees. They have to train someone in-house to know what documents they have, that they have to review. Then they have to have that person go through and go, each one of those employees enter it into the system and then it's verified in the system. And then after that, it's certified and then they can give us the list of their employees that have been certified.
But the responsibility is on the business, not the city?
No, it's not, the responsibility's not on the city to certify them, no.
Okay, and the responsibility is on the business? And so if the business chooses to certify and send you a document that says that they have, what was it in the document that you said was not accurate?
Was not accurate?
Yeah, it was not accurate. You said that there was some, that the information, the names were wrong or whatever the case. Mr. Moore, you have some other information?
Yeah.
If you would, please. State your name and address again, please.
Justin Moore, 2821 Caldwell, Ammon, Nebraska, 68131. From my awareness, the bid documents that we have that, that we need to fill out for I9s and e-Verify information, the first form is the Affidavit for Employment Classification Act and that was, that talks about having a E9, it's talking about unemployment and different things like that. And the first form that we have to fill out based on responsibilities of e-Verifies is a responsible contractor compliance form, RC1. And that's the only form that, that we are aware of that is in the bid documents that complies with the I9 e-Verify information.
And you continue to say that you would never ask about this before?
No, well, these forms, you have to fill them out every time you bid.
Yeah, every time you bid, you fill the forms out, but you never were asked, go ahead.
Well, that RC1 form, you have to fill it out, it's bidding procedures, but if I'm not, if I'm, the affidavit is filled out once you sign the contract, from my understanding. You have to fill out that affidavit, it's not turned in once you're bid. Those are the documents that we know about that are, that are, that are based on the e-Verify or the I9 or unemployment.
Okay. And so, and so with, you're saying again that you did not, you didn't have to fill out any of that? I mean, you didn't, you didn't, you were, you have never been asked those questions before?
Just the actual e-Verifies, we've never been asked that. From my understanding, the bid documents, they make you responsible for that. So if anything happens or would it be in a federal situation that?
So if the feds came down, the company would be the one responsible?
Right, because you're responsible because, and it takes, from my understanding, it takes away from the city's responsibility because you're filling this form out, making the city aware that you're responsible for your employees and for the, for any information that you need to withhold for them.
Okay.
Like you said, I didn't know it was the city or Mr. Cleftner's responsibility to verify our e-Verifies.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Bott, do you have another question? Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Ted Becker, 11225.
Name and address, please, Mr. Becker.
Ted Becker, 11225 Davenport Street. I just was going to echo Mr. Moore's statements and if I wasn't crystal clear. So there are documents in the bid, this is the standard bid form for this particular project.
Yes.
And there's RC1, which says the contractor will comply with the e-Verify system. It doesn't say that the city gets to go through your e-Verify and decide, oh, hey, there's a red flag raised on one of these guys in here. That's not the city's business. Both of these contractors supplied their e-verification after request to say, okay, we're in that system. The contract talks about you have to certify, the contractor agrees, the contractor will not knowingly employ or hire an employee not lawfully authorized to perform employment in the United States and the contractor and all subcontractors shall use e-Verify to determine eligibility. So your requirement as a contractor is use e-Verify. Both of these contractors that lost out, they used e-Verify and they submitted e-Verify documentation, at least with respect to NNL. My understanding is some issue was raised about, you know, somebody on the list or one or two people on the list, but that's, my point is the e-Verify is a safe harbor for employee, or for employer. If you use it and you have those guys that are checked out, you're fine if it turns out that someone's got a false social security card or something's amiss. But the bottom line is, it's not for the city to say, we're going to double check your e-Verify, we're going to basically act as INA, you know, ICE, whomever that gets into these issues. That's not the city's responsibility and that's why you require these certifications in the contract. It puts it on the employer. And the bigger point I would get to is, it just strikes me that in some cases, you can abuse these sort of requirements by digging into them to almost create hurdles for certain small businesses. Think back to the Civic project that we were talking about and there were certainly red flags raised with people about the city, about the contractor getting sued by their own bonding company. That huge red flag there, but not the sort of, not a request for them to give a financial statement, not to give e-Verify list, none of this sort of minutia that was imposed on these smaller contractors, precisely the ones that are less equipped to handle those type of requests and the ones that you should be, according to the ordinances, encouraging to get this sort of work. So that's the issue I would have.
Thank you. Those are, those are all my questions. I just have a couple of comments that I want to make. First of all, you know, in the Small Emerging Business Ordinance, the ordinance spells out specifically on the first page, the purpose of this ordinance is to stimulate the growth of small and emerging businesses in Omaha with special attention to stimulating economic growth within census tracts with high levels of poverty. In this particular instance, we have two companies that have performed work prior. We have Spencer Management that has performed extensive work and has, as up to now, to my knowledge, has done a good job on all of the work that they have done. They submitted the appropriate bid. They were the low bidder. There is nothing that I have seen that demonstrates that they can't do the work. And that's what we as a city ought to be concerned about is to whether or not they can or cannot do the work. And based on what we've seen in their performance, not something that we speculate about, but what's in their performance, their performance has been exemplary throughout with no bond losses or anything of that nature. So to not even consider them as a low bidder and then ask for questionable information, and we can go back and forth as to whether the city's responsible or who's responsible for this or who's responsible for that, but at the end of the day, these questions were more tedious in my judgment than anything. And questionable, and I do have serious questions about the meeting that was held on the 9th, where they were requested to give various information and on the 10th, a letter was already produced to disqualify those individuals. These things are suspect in nature and they're the very reason why when people of color especially get really frustrated when they have gone about the process of following the rules, the way that the rules were at least, they were led to believe in the bid document, just to find out at the end that for some reason, that has nothing to do with what's in the bid, they're being rejected. And then on top of that, to have them come in on the 9th, raise certain issues, have you get back to them by a certain period of time and the very next day, you write a letter that says they are disqualified and you go to section, and you go to Article 10 of our, of our co- 10 of our, of our code, and in that code, it says, uh, "If owner or engineer after due investigation prior to the effective date of the contract has reasonable objection to any proposed subcontractor, supplier, individual, or entity, owner shall consider the bid noncompliant and therefore reject the bid," is it more reasonable for a contractor who is $200,000 under the engineer's estimate, is it more reasonable, and, and they have the bonding capacity, and they have the insurance, is it more reasonable to allow that contractor to work, as opposed to, we're talking about taxpayer dollars here again, to give the contract to somebody who is $100,000 over the engineer's estimate, I have serious questions about this, serious concerns about this, and I think the low bidder should have gotten the, should have gotten the work in the first place, thank you all, Mr. Jerem.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, this particular type of appeal, I don't know that we've seen before, we, we've, as a body, only speaking for myself, but my sense is that we've taken this strict construction approach to bid appeals and technical compliance with what the bid specifications call for, but is at least what I heard in, in the President's questioning was that, trying to establish a case that the bid was complied with what was asked for, and therefore, we're kind of in a new gray area as to, no pun intended, uh, as to what to do with this particular appeal, so I'd like to have Mr. Cleffner come up and, and perhaps with some others shed some light on, when you sent the letters out saying that their bid had been rejected, did you notify the, um, rejectees, so to speak, of your reasoning specifically for rejecting?
In the letters, no, I spoke with them, um, had the actual contract manager contact them, I had actually, when I sat down with them originally, I expressed my concerns, for instance, for instance, with Spencer Management, the reason why I wanted more information from, um, Mr. Moore was because, for instance, we had had the $400,000, or $500,000 contract the previous year that went up to, to, it should be about a million when it's all said and done, um, to be honest, three months-
Let me stop you there.
Go ahead.
Was that a concern that the work was costing the city almost double, or is it concern for performance issues, or?
Concern for performance issues, three months out of the year, he was behind more than a month in the work that we had for him, and we ended up, because he tried to get more work and get ahead of the schedule, we had to hold back work until he finished punch list items on previous work he had done, so we were actually behind in, on, on getting stuff done, and we're getting complaints from, um, residents and residences within the CSO projects that they were doing work, because the work was not done in the timely manner that we had told them it would be done, that's what my concern was with the performance issues, was because he, here he was, we were, um, on a non-emergency contract, and he was two months behind during certain parts of the contract, that he couldn't keep up, and he didn't have the manpower to do it.
All right, so now, that wasn't written anywhere?
No, that was a, that's a judgment call, and it's, and from my reviewing of it, is that we presented the facts as they were, the reason that they did not meet contractual obligations, as far as a judgment call, that, that's a judgment call, I was looking for, for substantial reasons on why there wasn't, and the E-Verify and the ICB was a substantial reason why, my, the preliminary reason why I requested the documentation was because of performance issues from the previous year.
And, all right, so I thought I heard you say earlier, the reason for rejecting was primarily the, the-
E-Verify.
Evidence in your mind that though the responsible contractor form had indicated the use of E-Verify, the documents provided to you led you to conclude that they could not have used it up to that point, because I think you said you didn't have documentation to show they had someone trained, and that they'd actually run the reports on it?
They actually told me that, they, they had told us, the city, that, that they did not have somebody trained in-house to actually do the E-Verify, so they were gonna have somebody do the online courses, and then certify their employees before they could do it.
So, this would be a secondary reason to the performance issue reason?
Secondary in the sense of that-
It's another one on the list, or is it?
It's another one on the list, but basically, when we reject a bid, our, our, we look for contract reasons to reject the bid, what on the contract did they not, what requirements within the contract did they not meet, judgment would be secondary, if they didn't meet the, if they, if there wasn't a contract reason, then I would look at the performance reason and present that to the council in the sense of a performance, on a contract basis, they're very factual, very straightforward, we can present the reason on why they didn't meet the contract, and move forward on that, if it becomes to a judgment, then I have to present the argument and go forward with that.
So in responding to this particular bid, when you met with Mr. Moore, did you articulate your, you were going to reject their bid because you didn't believe, based upon their-
I told them-
-previous performance issues, that they could perform here, as well as the E-Verify concern?
I told them with the documents that they would submit, they would have to sell me on the fact that they would be able to do the work, because in my, my opinion from their previous performance, and what they had, what they had established on their work recently, they weren't able to do the work that we would have requested them to do.
So, as, as I learned, and I've been here now almost seven years, and I continue to learn about this bid process, I, I, it was my understanding that the city goes to great lengths, and we as legislators for the city have gone to great lengths, to try to make the process as objective as possible, so that responding bidders can know the rules of the road, and therefore, compete on a level playing field.
Yes.
But what you're telling me here today is, and, and I had some information on another matter earlier this season, let me believe, there's, there's in fact a subjective part to the city's analysis as to whether someone is the lowest and best bid in terms of most responsible, is that what you're telling me?
Yes, yes, it can be, um, but, but in that case, um, I don't believe we've made an argument recently, um, since I've been here, on someone being, um, an irresponsible bidder, typically, there's something in the contract that they did not do or did not meet.
Well, I had someone who happened to be another small and emerging small business, that, and happened to be primarily, um, African-American employee comprised-
Are you referring to Jackson Complete Concrete?
No, I'm not, I'm referring to the company that wanted to compete for the contract compliance work for, in the winter, we have contractors that do city work around the city, and this particular contractor wanted to, to bid on that for an opportunity to participate in what particularly, in our experience, had been awarded to established engineering companies in Omaha, and here is a small, emerging small business that said, well, how do I compete for this, and what I learned from Mr. Stube in that case is, that Mr. Rousier for street maintenance makes a judgment call, do they have the experience, the ability, performance-wise, to fulfill the, what the contract was calling for, so they just got eliminated wholesale, just, you're out, we don't, it's our opinion that you do not, so that was kind of a frustrating deal, and I don't know what the answer is, but, and I don't know that you can ever totally eliminate this subjective component to, to bid response evaluations, but I, I know it's the system we're using now, and it frustrates me, but it's what the system is that we have, and as long as that's the system, if you, are you a licensed professional engineer?
Yes, sir.
So you're saying, as a professional, based upon a reasonable degree of, of certainty within your field of, of, of engineering, it's your opinion, in the best interest of the city, that the rejected bidders could not perform as required?
The, the, the first individual company, um, yes, to the best of my opinion, they, they could not, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Jerem, if I could, please.
Yes.
I, I think there's two things that we need to keep in mind here-
Your name, please?
Bob Stube, I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk, um, two things we need to keep in mind here is that there is a contract document that is put out, that essentially establishes the rules and regulations with regard to the submittal of a bid, and so, we look at that as being kind of the, the black and white issue with regard to the, the bid documents, and so, we would look at that and say, are there things that they did not comply with, and therefore, we would say, that is a noncompliant bid, and if it's a noncompliant bid, then you don't necessarily have to go into the next phase-
Deliver.
-of making a determination as far as whether the contractor is capable of performing the particular project that they're bidding on, in this particular case, I think the argument that, that Mr. Cleffner is making is that the, what was determined to be, in, in the two particular instances we're talking about, is that the contractors are essentially noncompliant with the submittal of, of the contract documents, and therefore, we do not have to go into that next phase of making determinations as far as whether they are the lowest and best bid, or the lowest and responsible bid.
Interesting, because I thought I heard you articulate in both, Mr., I thought I heard Mr. Cleffner articulate two reasons, one would be in the technical side, and one would be on the, on the actual, could they deliver what the contracts specify?
That is correct, and I think that's part of, again, Bob Stube, public works, I think that's part of, of the initial evaluation, was to look at it from, from both, again, both perspectives, were they in compliant, and therefore, if they were determined to be in compliant, do they have the capability of performing this particular work, keep in mind is that the contract that we're talking about is an emergency type of contract, so those are things that come up during the year, that we don't have any idea as far as what can happen, it could be, uh, a large water main break that takes out multiple lanes of paving, it could be a storm sewer that, that ends up damaging paving, it's something that is unforeseen, and therefore, we put out a contract based on emergency, which the intent is, is that we want somebody to be able to respond on a quick basis, get in, do the work in accordance with our contract documents, and then get out and, and move on potentially to another project.
And, and as I understand what Mr. Cleffner's saying is, and I wanted to see if you agreed with his, his, the summary of his testimony that I'm about to say is, with regard to the concern that you just articulated, Mr. Stube, did you, would you agree with me that you heard Mr. Cleffner say, based upon how, at least, Justin Moore from Spencer Management LLC performed on last year's contract, given that type of emergent basis and need for services, they couldn't deliver that with this contract?
And again, if, if we got into the situation where we evaluating, uh, all the bidders based on whether that we could consider them to be the lowest and best bid, responsible bid, there was concerns with regard to whether, uh, these contractors would have the capability of performing, uh, a $1 million-plus contract in an emergency situation, but again, because of the fact that, uh, the contract documents talk about the E-Verify requirements that the city, the state has, uh, we didn't get to that point where we actually had to reject based on their capability, it was rejected because of noncompliance with the contract documents.
Right, I actually don't take issue with Mr. Cleffner following up with the verification that there is E-Verify in use, um, I mean, I regularly have people come to my office or, or, that are, are construction workers, that feel like the companies that they work for lose out on work jobs, because they're not a level playing field by companies who employ people who are not authorized to perform employment in the US, or, or earn income in the US, so I don't, I don't take issue with that, what I take issue with and have concern about, and it's, um, I'm, I'm leaning towards deferring to the department on this one, but my concern is trying to eliminate, to the best we can, this subjective gray area, uh, so that people like Mr. Moore, and the other gentleman that was here, and Mr. Swain, and anyone else who wants to bid, know, hey, there's a grid, there's a, there's, you know, checklists as, as to whether you can perform or not, I mean, is it, is it 11 employees? I mean, so if they submitted with 10, well, does that knock them out, uh, or is it, if you have 15, then maybe you, that's, that's what I'm struggling with, is that there's really not a, a, a written process that takes the evaluator, in this case you, through that evaluation and comparison as to where they can do it?
Well, when I, in this situation, with it being an emergency contract, I looked at previous year's work, and this is how I would go through this contract, not saying, every contract's different, in my opinion, for instance, with the, with the other contract that Spencer Management had last year, or, we worked with them to get them to understand what our, what our expectations were, um, and hopefully, if they get the contract this year, we can work on them more and more to get them to the contractor we need them to be to do the work and the compliance we need them to be, with this contract, with it being an emergency contract, I took a few criteria to look at what, what, what I would look for when I was looking through it, one would be is that six weeks out of the, out of the summer last, last year, we had five, five crews working in, um, working in areas six to seven days a week, for approximately six weeks straight.
But don't you think it's fair to Mr. Moore, that if you have that as your reasoning to-
And I explained that to him, and I, and I-
That that's in the letter, and that that's documented, so that there's not a, he said, he said, yes, he told me, no, he didn't, or, you know, this is the first time I've ever been told that, don't you think that there's a, a documentation that would be best for you in order of, to avoid situations like this? I mean, when-
There, there is a potential for that.
When Parks came through just a few weeks ago, when, I mean, and Ms. Peters came down, she, I mean, right or wrong with Mr. Becker again involved in that case, is that she could take us through every single thing that happened, and then she identified what went haywire on that one, but, um, here, and I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take you at your word, and I'm, I'm not gonna, uh-
And, and-
-vote for awarding the appeal, but I, I don't want this situation to come back before us again, where we're talking about this lack of documentation, no, I wasn't asked this, yes, you were asked this, um, and, and I hope and recommend and encourage you to try to get a written protocol, where you can write your notes in the grading of areas of, of performance, and, I mean, I represent people who do bids, and their, their committees and the scoring processes, and I've been in this situation where there's an, an appellant that comes in and says, this, this wasn't scored correctly, and in each and every one of those cases, I, my client provide me in my lawyer job, the, the written documentation as to how they arrived at the decision they did, okay, so I'm gonna take you at your word today, but for me, at least going forward, I don't wanna hear or see this verbal, yes, I was told this, no, I wasn't, I, it's just, it's not, I don't think the best way to go about doing business, and, and it leaves this hanging, lingering, not only bad taste in the mouths of, of, uh, emerging small businesses like Spencer Management, and the others who are watching here today, but it also leaves them the position to, to struggle with not knowing in documentation what they need to correct moving forward, it's not like the situations we've had where we knock out the bidder, I, I'll never forget the one where there was a company from Kansas City that, that bid on a contract that didn't have the RC1 form, and Hawkins Construction was here, and I think it was like a 30 or 40 million dollar project, and Hawkins said, and I think it was Chris Hawkins, said, we've painfully been on the other side of that, but we learned from that, and Mr. Armstrong has, has had that situation, he talked about here today, but what these people from Spencer Management, and the other, uh, contractors saying is, we don't know, right? How, so, I think it's only fair to them that they, they are provided with something, and I don't think it's too much to ask, but I am going to defer to you today.
Ms. Melt?
Yes, I just, well, I have a, a few concerns, and, and first, number one, I, I just wanna say, I, I think that Councilman Jerem is, is correct in the documentation, I mean, I, I find it very disturbing that there was a letter that went out on March 10th, dated March 10th, that didn't go out until, you know, late March, or whenever it went out, that, that's concerning, and, and what I appreciate is the fact that you said, well, I had this drafted, but I was gonna give them, I guess, a second chance, or I was allowing them to provide me with some additional documents in three days, well, I appreciate that, but I think if I was, if I was- Now, I appreciate that, but I think if I was, if I was one of the two bidders that was told, you get three days to try and correct your, what you had, and you work, and in three days you provide at least some of the information, and then you see a letter that was written before you did all that work. Can you understand how that would make somebody feel?
I can understand the frustration in that, yes.
I mean, so-
And, and again, that's, that's my fault, and we should've either redrafted the letters. It was overall in the communication that, that I expressed, Ms. Tippi Pierce had, she's very usually on top of things, so she went ahead and drafted.
No, and this, and by the way, people make mistakes, but here's the problem. Both Hawkins, Armstrong, I think probably Spencer, probably any contractor that's in this room has been in the spot where, guess what? You don't get to make a mistake when you're doing the bid. If you make a mistake and you're off, you don't get the bid. So now the city's turning around and saying, oh, well, we probably shouldn't have done that, we made a mistake. Well, if you're gonna hold the contractors to that kind of standard, then I think we should expect ourselves to be held to that same standard. And, and I'm not gonna stand up here and rate you on that anymore. I just, I think that's something that should be very, very important. Now, the, the issue is that it shouldn't be the city's business whether E-Verify is done. I guess I, I do have a problem with that because E-Verify is required by the federal government. Is there, I was looking earlier to see if potentially Mickey Frost is here, but Bernard, can you answer that question? I, I mean, I understand it's required under the state statute. And under the state statute, and, let's see, it is Section 2113, Article 26, that's in our state statute, employment under public contracts. And this was approved by, I believe, this should've been Governor Heinem in April 8th, 2009. In 26.01, Section C, the successful bidder understands and agrees that lawful presence in the United States is required, and a successful bidder may be disqualified or the contract, contract terminated if such lawful presence cannot be verified as required by Nebraska Statute, Section 4-108. I mean, in addition, this statute is just confirming the requirement by federal law. And here's what my problem is. Initially, I thought maybe that they just had a couple employees off, which I can understand. You have three days to do the E-Verify from the time you hire. So I can understand in a contractor's position how maybe you might lose an employee, hire an employee, and so within a three-day period, you maybe have to rectify some mistakes. My concern here is that this employer admitted they have nobody that knows how to do this. Therefore, however long they've been doing business, they had never been E-verifying any of the employees. And, you know, there, there's multiple issues that I have with that. Number one, we have a lot of people that are legally here in this country that live in some of the most blighted areas of Omaha that can't find work. And so if jobs that they could be employed by people in North and South Omaha, they're looking for jobs, they need jobs, and we've got employers that are able to maybe come in $200,000 less because they're using undocumented, illegal people, and they don't have to pay them as much. Well, that's hurting the very people that I think we're trying to assist at Heartland Workforce Development and in our SEB program. So I think it's highly unfair that we have an employer that actually admits, I don't use E-Verify, I don't even have anybody that knows how to use E-Verify, and I appreciate the fact that you're gonna get somebody, that he's gonna get somebody. And again, sometimes these are the struggles of being a small business. There's so many rules and regulations, it's hard to keep up with all of them. So I feel bad for Spencer because our federal government comes up with a new regulation that he has to comply with on a daily basis, and it may be difficult for him to follow all those. But this is one, hiring illegal immigrants and E-Verify. I mean, there's been public commercials and everything on E-Verify. I mean, you have to E-Verify, you have to document that you have legal citizens working for you. And I mean, just recently, we've been accused of being a sanctuary city by not just local people, but even in the, in a national news article. Well, guess what? If the city is going to take the position that it's not the city's business to verify that our contractors that have public contracts are using E-Verify and verifying that the people that are working at this courthouse, that are working on city projects are actually legal residents of this country, or have a green card, or somehow legally able to work, then I think maybe we would be becoming a sanctuary city. I mean, we had Edwin Mejia, who we've said, yes, it was ICE's fault, ICE didn't put the detainer on there. But the city of Omaha was calling. Omaha Police did their job, county attorney did their job, but ICE didn't put the detainer on there. Well, you know what? The city needs to figure out what we can do to make sure that doesn't happen again so that we don't have an illegal resident who kills a beautiful young woman, and he's able to just escape. And I know I'm digressing because you're looking at me, it has nothing to do with my contract. But you know what? It does. It does. If we say that the city does not have any responsibility in making sure that illegal immigrants are not only detained when they're arrested for committing a major crime such as killing Ms. Sarah Root, or that we have illegal immigrants working on city projects that taxpayer funds are paying for. So, I mean, those are two examples where I think of anything, if you admit you're not verifying that your employees are legal, that in and of itself should keep you from getting the contract. Now, if the city was not routinely checking on that before, and you just started, well, you should've started a long time ago, but I'm glad you finally started now. And I think this absolutely, it's part of the state statute that I know is part of the bid. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we already have the law there. It's just that people, bidders aren't necessarily following it? Is that true?
Again, this, this was, this was the second project that I requested the information on.
Okay. So it's been there, but you've never actually requested confirmation?
Yes.
Okay. But it's in there that you have to follow, E-Verify. Okay. So I appreciate it, but what I would like to see in the future, if the city is gonna do that, we cannot pick and choose when we're gonna do it on a contract. I mean, if we're gonna do it, you have to do it all the time. And I think it should be done all the time. So I guess, those are mine, but the other thing is, is the 100% SEBs.
Yes.
I guess I, I thought that's what we were trying to go for, is 100% subcontractors on a contract like this. 100% of the subs need to be SEBs. Is that correct?
That, yes.
Okay. And I guess that's what I've heard, that we need to start doing that even more, not just on certain contracts, but this is one contract where we are requiring 100% SEBs.
Yes, I have, I believe, four to five projects I put out a year that are 100% SEB.
Okay. And I, I would think that that is moving more toward the goal that we've set for the city of having certified SEBs doing these, these projects. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So although, and I, sorry if I seem a little harsh, but I am, I am distraught about the timing in the letter, so, and I am a little bit disturbed that we haven't checked before. So I do appreciate the fact that you will start maybe double-checking, triple-checking things, but also have a process that you follow for every single bid, so, and, and I think E-Verify is extremely important. So, thank you, I have nothing further.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Question for City Legal. Okay, it's, it's clear to me that E-Verify is the law, and we're gonna do it, but I'm not clear as to whether it's the contractor's job to do it or whether it's the city's job to, to verify the contractor's job of what they did.
Bernard Indembush, Deputy City Attorney. I would tell you it's both. The contract, the, the provision on LB403, which we've hopefully inserted in all our contracts and all our bid documents, I think we have, makes it absolutely clear that it's the contractor's responsibility. But I guess I would say as a party to the contract, we have an obligation to make sure that the provisions are followed. And, and I appreciate, I, I've caught some of the conversation relative to this. Sometime I was in transit, and I actually was on a couple phone calls, so I didn't, I haven't heard everything since the beginning, but I've obviously caught the recent part. But I think the answer to your question, Councilman Thompson, is both.
And the both part of it, in terms of practice, is a new thing we're doing.
I don't know that I can say it's a new thing because apparently it's a new thing for contracts that are coming out of this area of the Public Works Department. We obviously have hundreds, if not thousands, of contracts a year. I don't have, I don't, I can't tell you one way or the other whether other people have confirmed that people are following it or not. I'd be disingenuous if I, if I tried.
For, is it your understanding that this is only the first or second time for these kind of contracts?
Well, all I can take is Mr. Kleffner at his, at his word from the bit I heard, which was, this is the second time that he has, has asked. I suspect that many departments who, when they oversee contracts, have not followed up, but I don't know that one way or the other.
At what point should we announce these changes or these updates or send out a letter saying, new process is on the horizon? What's our responsibility for doing that?
Well, I guess here's my perspective on that. One, the legislature of the state of Nebraska adopted a law in 2009. We're all supposed to know about the law. Our bid documents, the document that they received, that they decided, look at and decide whether or not they're going to submit a bid, contain that language in it. And then the contract that you have to sign, which is, there's usually a model of that enclosed in the bid documents, but then when you actually are selected, the contract that you have to sign has that provision in it as well. So I guess I don't-
What, what role does precedence play in terms of, there is a law, but there's also a period of time where we weren't following both sides of the coin?
Well, I, I guess I don't say, I don't think the law requires us to, the law doesn't say the city is violating the law if it doesn't confirm that everybody's been E-verified. It requires that contractors do it, and I think it's a good practice to do it. And I think what you're saying is we changed our custom.
Yes. At what point should we notify that the custom is being changed?
I don't personally believe that we have an obligation to tell people the custom is being changed, but I do think it's important that we be consistent in application of the custom.
This is as clear as mud. I understand what you're saying, but if the, if the seven council members are struggling with understanding it, definitely citizens out, out there, they're gonna be struggling as much or more than we are.
Absolute understand, and that's, as Ms. Meltin indicated, there's all sorts of laws that are adopted each year that put obligations on, on us, on contractors, on everybody else. And unfortunately, we have to, all of us have to try to weave our way through and make sure that it's, it's done properly. It's probably the Lawyer's Security Act.
The irony of this situation is that it's gonna cost taxpayers more money. Can I have Mr. Kleffner come back up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Without meaning to, you were getting ready to answer a question, and someone interrupted you. It's no big deal. I do it all the time, and so I need to stop doing it, but it's just a regular communication thing. But you were asked, to what degree did you think Spencer Management was not capable to do the job in relation to the prior work from last, from the last time, right? And you said something like Spencer may not be capable, but you never said anything about Navarro.
I was not asked about them.
I'm asking you.
The reason why-
Is Navarro capable?
I cannot say with 100% yes or no whether they're capable or not. I do-
So why were they rejected?
Again, they did not meet the E-Verify-
E-Verify, okay. All right. The mud gets muddier, okay?
That, that being said, if I can get, if I can point something out, the Navarone, N-L-N-L concrete, as it's called now, or this is, the business has been in business under a year. Last year on its books, it showed a loss. The, what I would call would be the second in charge, not the owner, but the individual involved with the company. The last two businesses he's been involved with have had penalties and bankruptcies involved with them, and we just don't-
Okay, now you just gave me two answers. You gave me you weren't sure, and now you're kinda going back and talking about some prior owners that are no longer with the company.
Well, no, they're, they're, no, they're, this is, this, do you wanna elaborate, Mr. Stube?
Bob Stube, Public Works. I think that there needs to be a clarification here, is that the second low bidder, N-L-N-L, we have no experience with. To the best of my knowledge, they have not been awarded a contract as N-L-N-L. So they've only been in business for less than a year, and I don't believe we have any experience with them. But again, again, Bob Stube, Public Works, sorry. The, Mr. Kleffner indicated is that, once again, is that we don't get into the second phase of evaluation because the first phase of the evaluation was essentially noncompliant because of E-Verify. If, if they were in compliance with everything, then you would go into the next phase and make any determination as far as whether, again, the second low bidder was capable of being the lowest and responsible bidder. Clear as mud?
It, it, it vacillates between, it gets a little clearer when you put some chemicals in it, you cough, then it gets muddy again. So that's kinda where I'm at in between those two meanings.
I apologize for coughing.
No, the coughing is me. All right. In my other life, the other professional life I have, we have a rule that students are supposed to be right, but when they're wrong, they have a consequence. Teachers, educators can never be wrong. So whenever there's a case where the kid and the teacher are wrong, the kid gets the mulligan. That's, that's the world that I'm used to. That world does not exist down here, and it blows my mind. So I'm in a paradigm shift, dissonance place right now, trying to figure out between right and wrong. How then should we live type stuff? And it seems as if when we make a mistake, it's because we're human and we're learning. When they make a mistake, it's bad girl, bad boy. I just, gosh, I'm having a problem with that. And so if, 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 if in fact, sending the letters out could've been done better, if in fact, our custom changed and we aren't helping people understand that custom change, and if it really is a true miscommunication of, I thought my E-Verify is okay, and I didn't know it was not okay until today's hearing, you know? And, and these are hard words for me to say because I, I'm a strong Swain's backer. I like what they do for the city. But at the same time, we're, we're looking at a situation and it's very muddy, and it's gonna cost taxpayers a lot more money than what it should. So with that, City Legal, do I, do I have, are my own legal grounds, if I say, let's send this all back and just reject everything, have them rebid it?
And Bernard Indembush, Deputy City Attorney. And my biggest problem is I haven't heard all the testimony. So I, I'm gonna give, if I try to answer-
Is there, is there any other City Legal person here that's heard it all? Mud keeps getting muddier. Water gets muddier. I'm not, I'm not casting stones at anyone. I'm trying to figure out how then should we live stuff. Go ahead.
No, I suspect it's the council discretion. I just, you wanted a fine, a finding, a definite answer, and I'm a little scared to give a definite answer without having heard all the testimony and seen everything, but-
Bob Stube.
Bob Stube, Public Works. What, what I can tell you is-
Can we, can we, can we reject this and start over?
We, we potentially can, but what is in front of you today is essentially in a- We potentially can, but what is in front of you today is essentially an appeal to something that has not come in front of you yet for awarding a contract.
Right.
That will take place next week, is what the proposed date, as far as the actual awarding of the contract to the third low bidder that was compliant.
So could we reject the appeal today, and then when the contract comes before us, send it back?
Yes, I believe you have the capability to do that. Now, we have another attorney that's weighing in here, so.
Ryan Lee, Assistant City Attorney. Oma Municipal Code, Section 10-110, entitled rejection of bids, does state that the city reserves the right to reject any or all bids received for any city purchase or contract. I think that gives the city and the department director the right to reject all bids if that is in fact the determination.
But we, we would have to reject the appeal today? If, if we're going to go that route?
It's a matter of procedure.
Because if we don't reject the appeal, then it would go to the third lowest bidder? Is that correct, Mr. Stube?
No.
No. No, if you reject today, all you're doing is rejecting their appeal. You still have to act upon the recommendation that will be coming to you next Tuesday to essentially ward to what public ports believe is the only compliant bidder within the three.
Uh huh. Okay, and I'm, I'm going to make...
And then you'd have the ability to reject the, I mean, you would effectively could not award the contract next week, which is the rejection of all, of all the bids, effectively.
Uh huh. To my colleagues, one, one way, one reason for looking at it that way is that we try to start with a clean slate and fix what's wrong, and then we go forward and try to not have bad precedents set regarding things that, or mistakes on both sides. And I'm just wondering if that's the cleanest way out of this. And I would sure like to hear from my colleagues before I make any motion or do any vote. Interested in hearing from Mr. Gray and, and any of the others, especially the legal, the legal ones on the council.
Thank you.
I'll yield the floor at the time, at this time.
Mr. Pauls, thank you, Dr. Thompson. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I, by listening, I think there's been selective amnesia on both sides, to be honest with you. Because I cannot believe that in a conversation with the city and the contractors, that the discussion, that some on both sides did not know that there were some issues. I cannot believe that people were talking, even though it wasn't written down, that when the city said certain things, that contractors had to listen to that and understand. I agree with Councilman Jerram, we do need to be a little bit more consistent. That probably is some of the issue. But what I need to know from you right now, do these individuals, the E-Verify, where do they stand? I'm sort of confused on this. Are they on the right or the wrong side of that? Do we have that information from these two, these two contractors?
I have the E-Verify information from them. What was requested was a key, listed their key personnel, and the E-Verify for those key personnel. The key personnel and what was submitted for the E-Verify for Spencer Management, only one individual on the key personnel was on their E-Verify. The remainder of the individuals on their key personnel did not show up on the E-Verify list.
And the other?
The remaining, there were 10 other individuals on the E-Verify list that weren't on their key personnel.
Okay, that's on one of the contract, what about the other?
The other one?
To me, this is the issue that we need to resolve.
Sorry, I got to find my paper.
Well...
On, on Navarro, E-Verify documents only submitted for 12 of the 18 individuals on the key personnel list. Additional E-Verify documents were submitted for nine individuals not on the list. Again, all E-Verify documents submitted show that they had become employed within one to two days of the documents submitted.
Okay. So that's sort of mystifying, all of a sudden, but they were. As I can recall, the statute in 2000, or in 2009, the purpose of that is to make sure that we were hiring, quote, I'm going to use the word, people who are verified.
Uh huh.
Can you say, with these two companies? Because it doesn't really matter, they were breaking the law if we don't have verified people. So they wouldn't qualify?
Yes.
They would not qualify whether we're doing it or not, because the statute in 2009, and I, I've been there, says you should do that. And we're not doing it, doesn't really matter whether we said it or not, I mean...
Yes, I mean, for instance, Mr. Armstrong brought up, he's been doing it since, since it came into law. The E-Verify documents were submitted, showed anywhere from 2010 all the way to 2013 for all the individuals on his key personnel list that were submitted. And he submitted not only just his key personnel list, he submitted all the E-Verify documents for all his employees, and all of them showed that, that he had been complying with it prior to the contract submitted.
So we should not accept these contracts simply for that reason?
That's the basis of our argument.
To me, that's what it sounds like, that if they, if they weren't following what the statute has outlined, that's got them in a quandary. And the reason I'm saying this is hopefully that through all the discussion, everybody's going to learn from this. That's, that's where my issue is, if, if we weren't following the law, whether we, we just happen to decide to check on them right now, is what you're telling me?
Yes.
To me, we need to be more consistent, if the law says that. That's where, I think you'd have to hang your hat. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melton.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I think we'll have it.
Okay. Mr. Jerram?
Yeah, I was just going to say, as the author with legal department's help of the RC-1, you got to remember that the context that brought that about is we have had contractors coming before the council saying, we want to compete for city business, government work. We can't compete because we don't believe it's a level playing field. And you take that and combine it with our goals of the small, emerging small business goals to address high poverty areas of our city, and then you layer on top of that what the state law is. I mean, the state law trumps, right? We are a city in the state of Nebraska, and the 49 senators and the governor decide what's law, right? 25 votes, Mr. Pauls, is that what it took?
It's more than 25.
Well, the filibusters lately, but back then, I think it was 25 votes and a signature of the governor makes law, and that tells us the rules of the road that we have to live by. But we, at the same time, in 2010, created the same thing. And when we were debating that, Mr. Kratz was here, and the question, I believe, came up, if you go back, people asked, well, now how are you going to enforce that? And I think Mr. Stube said, I don't have the people to enforce that. Mr. Stube, is that a summary? Is that accurate?
You've got a better, Bob Stube, Public Works, you have a better memory than I, but I think you are correct. It becomes difficult for us, especially when it comes to the responsible contractor charge form, for us to essentially verify everything. And so the onus to us is essentially put back on the individual contractors that are submitting. And it doesn't prevent us, it's no different than getting an audit, that we could walk in one day and say, we're going to audit you and make a determination as far as whether you're actually complying or not.
So we had, we had at the time a conversation, I believe, and I'm paraphrasing it, and I think it might have included other people, but the conversation was something like this. There were a group of labor unions here that said, we'll help you if we think that there's people who are not complying with this E-Verify, who are not paying or are misclassifying employees as subcontractors that should be employees as something other than that. We can help you give that information. And they said, you should on your own audit some of these, just to, to do a sampling as you can. And so it was this combination of, of ways with which the city could try to find out if there were people following the law or not. Self, city randomly picking here and there to see if people were complying, and then the word would get out that we were in fact doing these random audits. And then secondarily, if contractors who were, had information that they thought they could bring to us that would document violations, that we then could take them. And we had a discussion about, well, who then would follow up on this? And we talked about, well, maybe the HRR, Human Rights and Relations Department could do it. And they said, not so fast, we don't have any employees anymore, because we've been gutted as a department, remember? And then we've talked about adding staff to that department, now we're here, we have a director finally, independent. But I think that at the time we did the RC-1, which followed on the heels of that law in '09, that we anticipated, at least I remember talking about, it would be some of both, where we on our own would do it, and then this fear of the audit in the contracting community would then gain compliance, because you never know whether you were going to be picked for the audit, and then as well as contractors bringing it to us. I sense I have, Dr. Thompson wants to ask me a question.
Number one is, number one is today, was this situation one of the random audits? And does the random audit also mean that even though I did the, or Spencer did the Verify, that maybe they didn't do it good enough?
All I'm trying to do is give historical context as to how this came about, when it came about, and what I thought the conversations, or how we were going to go about it. What we have learned today from Mr. Kleffner is before he got there, there were no random audits by the city that we were made aware of at least, or that he knew of or could find, and that he on his own decided, hey, this is the law, we should, we should be doing this, and he has now done it, this is the second time. So, but what was envisioned was before Mr. Kleffner, whether it be Mr. O'Brien who preceded him, or HRR, which we ruled out because they said, we just don't have the people to do this, that something would be happening in terms of occasionally checking on the bidders to see in fact that they were complying with the law. But now what he's saying is, he's now changed the custom that he is going to do this. Does that make sense? So what we had talked about in 2010, I think when we did the RC-1, 11, I'm getting, this, Tippy Pierce to correct my memory on that.
I think it's in 12.
I think it was March of 2010.
It's March of 12.
That's the first time Swain's seen it.
Yeah, and my recollection was the 10th.
It's March of, it's March of 2012.
All right. Well, it is what the, what Buster Brown's records say it is. He can tell us, but I don't think it, it matters much for what our, for what we're trying to say here is, what was envisioned with the RC-1, and the discussion at the time it was enacted unanimously, was that it was an acknowledgement, in my view, that we had a problem as a community, that we learned when we built what was then called the Quest Center. There was a very highly publicized documented case of the drywall contracting for that massive building that was actually being performed by people who were not authorized to earn income from employment in the U.S., as well as having been misclassified as independent contractors when they were in fact employees.
It, it feels right in my head, it feels wrong in my gut, and that's the struggle today here. Academically, I'm following you, but something just doesn't feel right.
Hold on, Ms. Melton's had her light on for a while now. Let me, Ms. Melton.
Well, and Dr. Thompson, you asked for our, for our response, but I guess here's my problem, that the E-Verify is not new. And so I, it's very troublesome to me to say, well, I wasn't doing E-Verify because you were never checking to see if I did it. And, and I believe under the, I believe that part of the bidding, please correct me, and Heather, Tippy Pierce, could you maybe come down here in case I have a question? But that they, that each bidder has to sign an attestation form actually stating that they do E-Verify, so...
But Spencer did that.
Well, so he signed, so he signed an attestation form saying, I do E-Verify, and then when the city said, oh, could you provide that to us? Oh, well, we really don't do E-Verify. In fact, we don't even have anybody in our company that knows how to.
Never seen.
And I don't know, that's why I'm asking, Heather Tippy Pierce.
I'll get to it.
Do you have to sign an attestation form?
I'll get to it. I'll get to it.
Let me ask Heather if bidders have to sign one, because I think by law, they're required to sign one. Is that right?
For the bid, oh, sorry, I've been sitting back there for so long. Heather Tippy Pierce, Public Works. Couple of things. In the instructions to bidders, which I think you were alluding to earlier, the 26.1, we do issue the E-Verify requirements. The bid documents must be returned with an RC-1 form, and then the successful bidder signs the affidavit at the time of contract execution.
Oh, you don't sign that until after you're awarded?
The attestation itself is signed with the award. However, in the instruction to bidders, we do reserve the right to do any investigations, including lists of key personnel, equipment, supplies, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We reserve that right in the instructions to bidders, Section 18, no, sorry, Article 19, that we can do any and all evaluations to ensure that we are doing our due diligence, both on the front ends and in the engineering specs, to ensure that we are responsibly paying, you know, our contractors that are going to comply with our rules.
Okay, so, so I have a question then. You don't sign the attestation form until you've received the contract. So any contractor that's ever been awarded a city contract would have then signed an attestation form?
That's my understanding.
So any contractor that bid on this, who's received a city contract before, would have signed an attestation form saying that they do E-Verify?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Did Spencer do it on the last one?
And so, did, did this company, Spencer, do it on the last contract that they were awarded?
I don't have their contract here. That's something certainly we can, we can go back to the executed contract documents and verify. What we're looking at here is, you know, the rejection of this contract and, and part, and I think an important part of that was because when we did those investigations, as we reserved the right to in the instruction to bidders, this came back as a red flag. And so we, and though the practice was probably not as clean as it should have been, gave them an opportunity to, you know, correct that, to reconfirm. And at that time, that information came back just as concerning, and so we went forward with the bid rejection. And that's, that's what's being appealed before you today.
Okay, so you gave them the opportunity to kind of fix the E-Verify problem?
Right, so based on the original conversations that were had after we completed the preliminary, you know, as I call the front end checks, we made sure that the RC-1 form was in, we made sure that they were in fact an SEB contractor, and some of the other provisions that we require. I handed everything over to the division as is typical practice. The division then went on to do their engineering specs and performance investigations as is typical procedure. This is when Mr. Kleffner had made some phone calls, had some concerns, and I went, and he said, if this isn't corrected, we're going to have to reject. So I drafted a rejection letter. He pulled that based on the March 9th and gave them another opportunity to correct. When that wasn't corrected, then they, the rejection letters were issued, and that's the rejection that's being appealed here.
Okay. And so I think that, I mean, I think that answers my question. At this point in time, when you noticed that there wasn't E-Verify, and you noticed that there wasn't 100% SEBs, then both companies were given the opportunity to correct that before their bids were rejected?
Correct. And as we've stated, the date should have been changed. We do have a practice of date stamping our certified mail receipts, so we did have a valid date from which to work from as far as what that 10-day window was. We provided those... We provided those certified mail receipt copies to the clerk so that he knew, okay, the 10-day period expires here. I personally had phone conversations with both of the rejected bidders, saying, yes, you still have a small window of time to, you know, you know, correct and appeal. That was, was done in the case of Spencer Management, was not done in the case of NLL. And so we are hearing Spencer Management's appeal today.
Okay. Thank you, Heather. And so I guess, Dr. Thompson, I guess my response was, would be, because I think your heart was having trouble with the fairness, I spoke with Ms. Pierce earlier today because I had some issues as well. I mean, if we just started this. But I guess I felt better knowing that they did give them multiple opportunities to try and fix the problem. So I guess if we were to vote to just rebid the whole contract, my problem is, is I think, number one, we're going to be rewarding people for violating federal law.
And state law.
But it started with the feds, the e-Verify. So we're actually rewarding people for violating the law, and it can't be, I didn't know about the law. It's like, well, I continue to violate the law because nobody checked. Now all of a sudden you checked, you should have told me you were checking. And I guess that, I have a hard time buying into that, that we didn't do it because you weren't checking on this. So you should at least let me know before you kind of, so. I guess that, I mean, and that's the problem that I have. And Councilman Gray, if, if you have something to correct, I guess that, I would love, I would, I would yield the floor to you. At this point, my problem is just, I look at it and see people violating the law, and I don't think that's fair, and I don't care what company it is. If, if Swain Construction did not pass the e-Verify, I would not want to give Swain Construction the contract either. I don't give anybody a pass on this one. Everybody needs to be doing the same thing so we have a fair playing field.
First of all, for the record, it's clear that this is only the second time we've done it. So you don't need to go back and check any further because this is only the second time we've done it. That's on the record. They just said that this was the second time they've done it. Secondly, let me ask you a couple of questions here. Mr. Endenbosh?
Yes, sir.
Or one of the other attorneys that may answer this?
I've got my sections all now.
Okay. Is, when, when, when they have to fill out the form, is the city liable if, once, once they verified, once they e-verify, do they, do they, is the city liable for anything?
In the form you're talking about, whether it's the contractor, the responsible contractor form, the city's not liable for anything. Obviously, they have, it's whether they violated a contractual provision.
Okay, let me cut to the chase here. Mr. Kleffner, the people that were in the, that were on the form, are those people illegal?
The people that are...
That they, that they gave you, that you rejected, are they illegal? Because we're sitting here talking about illegalities, and I've not heard anybody say that. So I just want to get it from you. Are the people that you, that, that, when you got the form from Mr. Moore and, and, um, NLL, yeah, what, the name, your name, NLL, were, were those individuals illegal?
The individuals on the, on the e-Verify, I, I would assume they would be because that's part of the process.
You assume they would be? Now, I'm not asking you to assume. Here, I'm asking you, were they illegal?
The key personnel list that was submitted by them, the people that were going to be working on the project, did not match what was submitted for the e-Verify.
But were they illegal? That's what, did you go back? You can't tell me whether they...
No.
So you didn't check?
No, I did not.
Okay. Mr. Moore, could you come up, please?
He can't check, that's...
First of all, did you ever, I, I don't recall you ever saying this, but if you did say it, I want you to say it here for the record again. Did you say that you didn't have anybody that knew how to do e-Verify?
Name and address.
Name and address for the record.
Justin Moore, 2821 Caldwell, Omaha, Nebraska, 68131. No, we never told Mr. Kleffner that we, never did that.
Okay, you never, you never told them that you didn't have any, you didn't know how to, you didn't know how to do it, or you didn't have anybody that knew how to do it?
No.
Okay, you never said that?
No.
Okay, so that wouldn't be inaccurate if they said that?
Right.
The people that you submitted, to the best of your knowledge, are they illegal?
No. We just decided to change our key personnel based on the scope of work once we met with Kleffner. And once we determined the severity of what he was saying, the scope of work was, we decided to change our key personnel to more qualified people.
To more qualified people?
Yeah.
But you hadn't, but you hadn't, you hadn't e-Verify, and they had, how long had they been on the job?
Well, we haven't started this project yet.
Okay.
So this is, this will be our second key personnel that we had.
Okay. And again, nobody asked you this before?
No.
Okay. Let me, let me just make a couple of statements here because I have serious concerns about this. I mean, first of all, and let me go back to De novo for a minute. We made the assumption, or the assumption was made, that there was no SEB component that could be performed. De novo found out that, De novo showed it, that that showed us that that was not true. We have a situation here where we're picking and choosing, this is the second time we've done this, and so now we're picking and choo, and I want you to try and look at it from the perspective of people of color, quite frankly. When, 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 when we try to, when we try to apply or follow the law, and we get caught up in things that change that we're going to do that we haven't done before, that is of concern to me. What happens if someone leaves the next day? How do we, how do we, how do we verify the change? What if somebody leaves the next day? What if your main guy left the next day? Mr. Kleffner, how would we, how would we check that? How often would we go out and verify that the people that are working are the people that are supposed to be working? How would we verify that, and how often would we do it?
It would depend on the contract.
Name and department.
On this contract, I wouldn't. Michael Kleffner, Public Works. On this contract, we typically wouldn't. There are some contracts we do, for instance, Davis Bacon contracts or federal aid projects.
Okay, and so you wouldn't, you, on this contract, you wouldn't necessarily, if they gave you a form today and then changed all their personnel tomorrow, you wouldn't know?
No, I wouldn't.
Okay. And so, because I'm concerned about the ability to follow up on this, first of all. And these are guys that tried to do the right thing. But here's what we have here. We have, we've had a couple of situations over the last few weeks where there has been questionable activity about SEBs and whether they should be involved or not involved. We've had situations, we've got a situation now where we've got two minority contractors who are being cast aside for another contractor under highly questionable circumstances in terms of what we choose, when we choose, and how we choose. This does not send, as my colleague to my left said, this doesn't send a good message, nor does it leave a good taste. The, the subjectivity in all of this is troubling at best. I mean, there's too much subjectivity in this. And I can tell you that, I'm going to take it upon myself, we're going to revisit some of these ordinances because, you know, right now, we have too much subjectivity. And at the end of the day, people who feel like they're doing the right thing, feel like they're doing the best thing, individuals who have competed, were you aware, for example, Mr. Moore, that they were concerned about your performance in the last job?
To a certain extent, we definitely sat down with Kleffner, just to be honest, you know. We sat down with Kleffner one time last year with us being our first major project with the city. And we had, it was, it was an issue that he confronted us on it, and we got it taken care of. But like you said, just as this being a small and emerging business, you're not going to find a perfect company that goes without making mistakes. I don't think it was a severity to the point where he pulled our bond, but he basically let us know what we need to tighten up on, and that's what we did. And it's like, we're trying to grow to the next level as a business, as a small and emerging business. But I feel like when you come to situations like this, it's not giving us an opportunity to be able to compete and, and to grow, and to bring other small and emerging businesses in to compete on the same market. So that was, that was most really where I was confused about because that wasn't, last year, that wasn't the heart of the situation is any flaws that we had in our work. Like I said, I, it was one time where we had an issue, and we got it taken care of, and we pushed forward, you know, so.
That, you know, I'm done with my comments here. I am going to support the appeal. I'm done with my comments. I'm vastly concerned about a level playing field. This doesn't look like it to me. And so those are, those are my comments, and, and we'll, we'll vote the thing up or down, or however we do it. But in the interim, know that I'm going to be looking at tightening up some of this subjectivity so that we're not faced with this again. Because this today, this exercise that we went through today is absolutely ridiculous. My comments, I'm done. Mr. Thompson? I'm sorry, Mr. Pauls, you're next.
I'll make this short. I, I disagree with you a little bit on this, Chairman, President, because I do think even though we do have difference of opinion, we are, we're trying to bring this to, to a solution. And I think I'm going to vote to reject the appeal. That means we'll move down, and if there needs to be discussed at another time, it can be. That's, that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Dr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could have Mr. Kleffner come up one more time. You had jumped out of the chair and you had wanted to say something, so I'm going to hear what was that a little bit ago?
He didn't, Mr. Moore did not specifically tell me he did not have somebody qualified. He told the contract manager, which was Mark Poland, which was, that was in contact with him after the meeting on why it was going to take him a certain amount of days to submit it. And he stated to Mr. Poland, again, this may be hearsay, but he stated to Mr. Poland that they had to have somebody in their office certified in that process.
Okay.
And they had to do the online training to do that.
Okay. I wanted to reiterate one important thing said earlier. I think several people said it, but going forth, in the rejection letter, we have to highlight everything in writing. We have to really bullet it and have everything. It can't be part from memory and in part that's documented. It's got to be all documented. And that, that's just a clean way to run a business. So I want to reiterate that.
Yes.
Thank you. And then Justin, if you could come up one more time? Or is it Justin? Yeah? Have to identify him one more time.
Justin Moore, 2821 Caldwell, Omaha, Nebraska, 68131.
Okay, first of all, I want to say thank you for being one of those businesses that are out there trying to make a difference. People like you and Omaha Hallen are really scraping and trying to make it work. And I don't, however this vote goes up or down, I don't want you to get discouraged. In fact, in this country, or in any country, every country has a dominant group and then one or more sub-dominant groups. And the sub-dominant groups have to work harder than the dominant group. That's just a sociological reality now. Now, you know, probably people in my party are going, ah, he didn't say that. But beyond political party, there's reality. And it's not color, it's power and privilege. So the dominant groups make the rules and have short memories, and then the ones that are on the bottom have to go through more stuff just to get to the same place. So I want you, however this vote is up or down, I want you to not get discouraged, okay? I want you to use it as a thing where you build your muscles and say, I'm going to, if I have to give 150%, and other people give 100%, that's just the way it is. Okay, now, the other thing I want to say is that regarding the being seen as, on the last job, as not being quite up to par, do you understand that this contract is an emergency contract where things happen and boom, you got to get on it right away? Are you understanding the nature of the emergency part of it?
Definitely.
Now, can you tell me, what was the reasons for being two months behind, as Mr. Kleffner described it?
Well, as I can recall, we weren't two months behind. The issue that we had last year, I'm glad you made, pointed that out. The issue that we had last year that we had to talk with Kleffner's project manager is about, is about our cleanup, about our backfilling. That was the issue that we had last year. When we talked, we talked in our meeting, and Kleffner basically stated the same thing he stated about us being two months behind. His project manager spoke different on that because we don't recall ever being two months behind. Nothing was ever documented about us being two months behind. So I don't, I don't know where that information came from. Our issue was about us backfilling behind curbs, sidewalks, and for us to bring that up to speed, and which we did. And his project manager told us that we, that we did, and the inspectors that they had in the field told us that we're doing a good job at that. So other than that, I don't recall it ever being an issue of ever being behind. And that's why we decided to bid on this project also, because once we understood Kleffner's and his, his project manager's expectations, we decided to go after this because we knew what the expectations would be the following year, so.
Okay. Okay. Could you just stay right there? And if Mr. Kleffner could come up? But just stay standing, if you don't mind. Identify yourself, please.
Michael Kleffner, Public Works.
How are you describing him being two months behind?
The backlog of work we had on the books that we could give him to move forward. Basically, what we have is we have work that comes when MUD is out of areas or certain contractors are out of areas, we go back in and do that. Work, whether it be sidewalk repair, panel replacement, and so on and so forth, it's considered non-emergency work because it can be done in a timely manner. It doesn't affect traffic and such. Basically, our backlog of work got to be about two months long due to the fact that the progression of work he had wasn't, wasn't, basically, he couldn't keep up with what we had for work. And so we only gave him the work that he could keep up with. And once he was done with that work, along with the cleanup and such, would give him more work to do with. And towards the end of the summer, we were about two months behind, which carried over after we had closed out on other stuff. That work was completed at the end of the year.
So there is a possibility that you were protecting him in a way that he didn't know that he was being protected?
No, actually, I discussed it with him thoroughly.
Talk to me about that.
In the initial discussion with Mr. Moore, I expressed concern with the size of the project, the amount of areas we would deal with, the penalties involved with doing it, and the fact that typically on some of the projects he's dealt with, the estimates are smaller at the end of the month. So there's not a large, large amount of cash that you have to upfront over the month. I expressed to him that this could be upwards of anywhere from $600 to $1 million in a month that we could have had, depending on how many water breaks we've had. And that's happened in the past. Putting a small business in a situation where they have that much cash flow out there, and they have no way to bankroll it, and the concrete companies won't, won't provide them with the line of credit to do it, that could put them at substantial risk. And I even expressed in the sense of, of within our limitations with the contract, with the other contract that he's bid on that is pending, that we could even maybe try to give him some additional work under that to see how it worked. He said he wasn't interested, and he wanted both the contracts.
Okay, thank you. You can be seated. And then Justin, I want you to be able to respond to what you just heard.
Thank you. Justin Moore, Justin, 2821 Caldwell, Omaha, Nebraska, 68131. And that was, that's one of my main concerns, too. And, and with this job being to the severity of him talking, and based on the amount of volume that you'll do within a, within a timeframe, the amount of cash flow that you'll have to have, I'm trying to get an understanding as why is this contract set aside for small and emerging businesses if he feels like the small and emerging businesses that are bonding for this project aren't capable? And that's my main concern because in the bid documents, it states that the city of Omaha has assessed that it is enough qualified Tier 1, Tier 2 contractors to bid this project in order to make the entire scope Tier 1 and small emerging business. I feel like if that's the case, then they need to make it to where it's open so you can get more competitive bids from all of those larger companies, which is Hawkins, you got Keywood, any of those larger companies that are willing to bid on a project like this. And then make them bring in smaller contractors like myself to be able to perform under these type of conditions if it's, if it's like that, you know? Because evidently, without us bidding, without Naval bidding, who's, who's qualified outside of Swain?
The, the structure, the way that it's structured points one way, but then when the results don't come out, then it's sort of like a mismatch of goals and practice.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I have no idea how I'm going to vote, but I'm going to have to make up my decision in 30 or 60 seconds. So thank you. You'll the floor.
No more, no other lights.
I'll just second Councilmember Pauls.
Okay, did he? I'm done.
Counselor Paul's been opposed to reject.
Okay. Okay. There's been a part... Okay, there's been a, it's been moved and seconded to reject, and no further lights. Roll call.
To deny the appeal.
To deny the appeal, I'm sorry. To deny the appeal.
Grant?
No.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
I'll disregard my gut and go with my head and the lawyers. So the council will not vote yes while voting no.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
No.
The appeal is denied on a 5 to 2 vote. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items 58 shall be held on the third reading. Ordinance on second reading. Item 59, ordinance approving a redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement with Garden Court Apartments to implement the slips in Blackstone Tax and Refinancing Loan Project Plan for the project site at 124 South 39th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 59 is today. Proponents, please.
Richard Hadley, City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Matt Dwyer, 144 South 39th Street, here on behalf of the developer.
Matt, we're going to have to get you a cot out here somewhere.
At least you have to come down for a liquor licensing earlier.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 60, ordinance approving redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement with 60 Sorenson to implement the Sorenson Place Tax Implement, Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for the project located northeast of 60th Street and Sorenson Parkway.
Public hearing on agenda item number 60 is today. Proponents, please.
Richard Hadley, City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Near Jackawall, 144 South 39th Street, for the developer.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 61, ordinance to transfer unencumbered appropriations in 2016 budget of the city of Omaha from the planning department and other budgetary accounts miscellaneous departments to the fire department for the purpose of providing funding due to the loss of a grant that was included in the 2016 adopted budget.
Public hearing on agenda item 61 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
62, special ordinance levying special tax to cover the cost of the construction sidewalks. SWR 2015-01.
Public hearing on, public, keep my words together. Public hearing on agenda item number 62 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items 63 through 64 shall be held on the third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing on agenda items 65 through 67 shall be held on the second reading.
Motion adjourned. Moved and seconded, no lights. Roll call.
Grant?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Stand adjourned at 4:53 PM.